You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education meeting for April 27, 2021. I'm Shay Woodbury, Chair of the School Board. I'm going to officially call our meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Everyone is here live tonight except Board Member Braemer. Unfortunately, she has had death in her family, so we ask the community to please pray for Board Member Braemer's family. The next item on our agenda is to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will have our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. We praise you for this time together tonight, and we are most thankful for our wonderful teachers and staff. As you know, it's been a tough year. Bless each and every student that walks through our school doors and keep them safe as our schools are now opening. We ask in their name. Amen.
The next item on our agenda is the Agenda Review. There needs to be an amendment to the agenda per notes I have here that for discussion, the Brunson survey results and proposed next steps should be included up under Discussion Items. And then there's in our Action, changing wording of Item H to read, "Consider Approval to Extend Option on Patterson Avenue Property and Make Browns Field Program Application." Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the amended items?
Second.
If there are no further questions or discussion, all in favor? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Special Recognitions tonight. The first item on the Special Recognitions is the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society Student of the Year.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight, Board. We appreciate it and are excited to recognize some students for excellence tonight. My name is Ashley Limley. I'm the Director of Advanced Learning, and we have had the honor of working with these students through their Governor's School application, and we also have a student to recognize for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. This is Stephanie Williamson, our Secondary Lead AIG Teacher, and at this time Stephanie's going to honor our students.
Students in our district are making an incredible impact on the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society's mission in the fight against blood cancers by participating in the LLS Philanthropic Leadership Development Program, Students of the Year. This year, the following high school students and Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools have joined others in the triad to compete for the title, Students of the Year. Tonight, joining us from East Forsyth High School is Beisha Bignall. And we also have one more student from West Forsyth, Dominic Maza, who is unable to be here tonight. So, one of the joys of my job as the AIG Lead was to work with the group of students and some others that you're going to be recognizing tonight with Governor's School. I want to start off by telling you just a little bit about Governor's School. The Governor's School of North Carolina is a five-and-a-half-week summer residential program for gifted and talented high school students that integrates academic disciplines, the arts, and other unique courses. The program is held from mid-June through late July on two campuses. Governor's School West will be held at High Point University in High Point, and Governor's School East will be held at Meredith College in Raleigh, with each campus hosting between 360 and 370 students. The curriculum focuses on the exploration of the most recent ideas and concepts in each discipline, and it does not involve any credit test or grade, so this is completely optional for students. Students are selected to attend through a competitive process after being nominated in many different discipline areas. Over 90 Winston-Salem Forsyth County students were nominated at their school level, with over 50 of those nominated from the district level. Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools had 29 students selected by the North Carolina Governor's School to attend this prestigious program, and I can promise you that the process is very selective and difficult. We are so proud of these students for their hard work and perseverance, both inside and outside of the classroom, and we are honored to have them representing our school district at this year's North Carolina Governor's School. You have a full list on your agenda of all of the student names, but I would like to recognize those that are in attendance here tonight. And we also have a certificate for them, so when I call your name out, if you will come get your certificate from Ms. Limley. Jessica Solomon from Atkins High School. Grayson Weevil from East Forsyth High School. Ellie Cawthon from Mount Tabor High School. Shandy McDaniel from Parkland High School. Reagan Ure from Reagan High School. And also from Reagan High School is Evan Orndorf. Ava Schick is here representing Reynolds High School. Janie Peterson is here from West Forsyth High School. And Ava Sheeran is also here from West Forsyth High School. Thank you for having us. Thank you.
The next special recognition is the United Way Campaign with Mark Ure. I think I'm pronouncing the name correctly. Vice President of Resource Development for United Way of Forsyth County.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Ure with United Way, and I want to recognize the school system for some excellence in the campaign that was recognized on the state level, but really briefly, I want to take a step back because about a year ago, you know, this community, everyone went home. For what we thought would be a week, two weeks, a couple of weeks, but as weeks turned into months, we began to hear from a lot of our partners and a lot of the folks we work with in the community about just an amazingly increase in the need for services in our community, specifically around basic needs, hunger insecurity. The homeless population has drastically increased over the last year, which is one of the metrics that we pride ourselves on as a community, that we've taken great steps to eliminate veterans homelessness and drastically increase or decrease the chronic homelessness population. But those numbers have steadily increased over the last year because a lot of the issues that's happened. You know, we've also known the unknowns of what happens with the kids that have been in the remote learning environments, a lot of the families. So, going into this fall, we knew that the need for our services were going to be greater than they've been in generations. And we, after a lot of conversations with our partners that we fund, a lot were seriously concerned about their sustainability. How were they, you know, their fundraising was drastically down. So, us going into this fall, you know, we felt a lot of pressure to raise the money necessary to support this community as we have done over the last almost 100 years. And thankfully, and I'm very humbled, we live in a very, very generous community, and people that were in a position to give stepped up. Businesses found creative ways to run campaigns, and it worked. But specifically the school system. So, if there's an organization, I think, in our community that had, you know, an easy way to opt out and say, "Not this year. This is something that, you know, we've got enough challenges of our own. There's enough things kind of in our way that we're trying to figure out, and this is just something else on our plate." But to the credit of the folks here, they stepped up and said, "We're going to figure out a way to do this, and I'm not sure how it's going to look. I'm not sure how it's going to work, but we're going to be creative, and we're going to give the staff, the teachers, the administrators the opportunity to give if they so choose." And they did. So, I am extremely, extremely impressed, extremely proud to partner with an organization that, you know, not only figured out a way to get it done, but actually increased participation in giving over last year, which was a typical year. So, on behalf of that, they were recognized, and we were honored to nominate them to a statewide award, and the school system was recognized as a Spirit of North Carolina Award. It's the United Way of North Carolina. It recognizes sort of statewide excellence in partnership. And, you know, on behalf of the United Way, I am extremely honored to partner with you guys. And please, on our behalf and the thousands of folks in this community that rely on these donations, just please accept my gratitude, and I will leave this for you guys. Thank you so much.
I think Brent wants us to put the picture together before you. We can see it in your eyes. Thank you. Just by chance, is there anyone on staff from Mr. Ure, you know what Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools was able to raise for our United Way campaign this year?
Just a little over 200,000, 200,000.
Oh, that's excellent. Wow. Not just. That is excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the National Board Certified Teacher Recognition with our Chief Human Resource Officer, Jevelyn Bonner-Reed.
Well, I just want to say good evening to our Board members, our Superintendent Ms. McManus and our Board Chair Woodbury, to announce the recipients of renewal and brand-new National Board Certified Teachers. I'm going to hand it over to our Coordinator, who's doing an amazing job of getting teachers to be National Board Certified, Ms. Deborah Troxell.
Thank you so much. National Boards is a remarkable program that has been well-supported by our school system. So, thank you Superintendent McManus, School Board, and guests for acknowledging the new National Board Certified Teachers this year. These teachers have to submit a portfolio of work in which they've analyzed their student instruction and student work to show the impact on student learning. And last March, when our world paused, these teachers were in the middle of completing an extensive portfolio to submit for storing. National Board provided options to defer, and they provided a lot of support, but these teachers chose not to defer. These teachers decided to move forward with the process, and they got their National Board certification in one of the most difficult times of teaching that we have known. So, now we'll recognize the newly certified renewed NBCTs and the attendance at the meeting tonight, so please come forward when I call your name. Kayla Vaden, who teaches 3rd grade at Piney Grove Elementary. Scott Armstrong teaches CTE at West Forsyth High School. Tiffany Kane, bath teacher at Reagan High School. Mignan Gomis, music teacher at Reagan High School and Jefferson Middle. Cheryl Jeffries, that teaches English 1 at Glenn High School. And Angie Keaton, that teaches 4th grade at Morgan Elementary. Thank you so much for all that you've done for our students and the school system last year.
Before you guys leave, can I say something really quickly? Because I didn't get to really say anything, but this is a major accomplishment. I know after, I have not done National Board, but I have so many colleagues that did it, and it is a huge, it is a huge task and one that takes a lot of time, but also shows what amazing educators you are, what amazing teachers you are. So, I just want to say congratulations. So excited for you, and thank you for representing our district as National Board Certified Teachers. So, thank you, guys.
Our last special recognition is the Board Spotlight Video, which will highlight recognizing our volunteers and the Remote Learning Centers, and a team effort at Atkins High School provides big results.
In the April Board of Education Spotlight, WSFCS celebrates lots of important recognitions. National School Library Month is in April, Assistant Principals Week, Administrative Assistance Day, Autism Acceptance Month is in April, Week of the Young Child, and National Public School Volunteer Week.
So, that's maybe somewhere we can start. Do you want to look at some of that?
This began back in August of 2020. We had absolutely no idea how we were going to really do it, but the good Lord has just put it all together for us and brought the right students to us that really needed the help.
I've been able to help them with English and English understanding so that they don't fall behind or, you know, sort of go into the gutter with their learning, and then just be and encourage you to them and say, "Good job, and stay focused."
What these kids need is someone who will sit beside them, read instructions with them, show them how, if they don't know the answer to something, how can you find the answer?
So, we were open in a time when schools were closed. We never thought schools would be closed, but at a time when schools were closed, we were here in the community, directly working with kids and families, and we've been an impact. I feel we've been an impact on making sure they're successful in their learning.
That's such a rewarding experience to have the kids accomplish something that they think they couldn't do. Often, we hear the kids say, "I can't do this," or "I can't do that," and I acknowledge that, you know, this may be a tough task for them, but we can always try our best, and we'll work for them.
There's more to it than that.
I would love to see what are the Remote Learning Centers to become a community learning center, and being able to take this model where we've realized that there's kids that could just use some help, and it's not, and, you know, there's lots of needs. I know kids that need specialized skill sets that the teachers and the other education team has, but also kids that just also need a supporting hand.
Do you like to draw or paint?
It is a beautiful opportunity to walk alongside somebody, to be a cheerleader. That's my favorite part, to be able to be a cheerleader for students. What we're finding is that, you know, students don't really need tech support. They need people support.
They simply need someone to help them and to love all along.
And so, we started warming up, stretching, doing some light jogging, and somebody told me, "Coach, you have a player down." I was like, "Okay." So, I looked, and, you know, obviously it was Pablo. So, I got over there and realized the severity of the situation.
I think I got two steps outside of the athletic training room, and I was met by two JV soccer players that said, "We need you at the baseball field. One of our players has collapsed."
And when I heard the word "collapsed," I jumped up and ran towards the AED and grabbed it. And as I was grabbing it, I saw she was already out the door running.
I started running and was met by a varsity player who said, "You should hurry. He's not breathing."
That is a long way from the athletic training room to centerfield of baseball. And when I looked out to centerfield, I saw Dylan, the JV head boys' soccer coach, doing compressions.
You know, my team, they acted, and they saw a teammate down, and they went to help. Couple of them went to go get Katie. Couple of them called 911. One player called Pablo's mom. So, they all just instinctively knew what to do.
We got the pads put on him, let it analyze his rhythm. It advised a shock, so we delivered the shock. EMS appeared out of my periphery, and they took over. We handed off care, and they did a phenomenal job, and had him speaking before they put him on the gurney.
There was a guy kneeling next to me, and he said, "You scared us." And I said, "What do you mean?" And then he said that your heart stopped. So, that's all I remember from that day.
So, it was a miraculous thing to watch, from where we started to where we finished.
You know, we talked about team sports. It was truly a whole team effort. It wasn't just one person. It was everyone working together to really get the job done and help save Pablo's life. So many things kind of lined up. So, I'm incredibly thankful for my friends who could recognize something was wrong so quickly, for my coach who could detect that there was no pulse, and he started doing CPR. The team at Atkins had it drilled down pat to where they were able to get my pulse back within a minute, and I'm incredibly thankful for that.
Do you feel like they saved your life?
100%. 100%.
It was great forethinking by Central Office, especially just with, not just AEDs, but for the athletic trainers. It's an investment.
Incredibly thankful. Not only did they have one, but that was fully charged and that they were able to recognize that's what I needed.
It's an investment that was needed, still needed, and I'm so thankful that they made that investment.
I would have never thought anything like this could ever happen, and it did. And it's just about being surrounded by the right people. They were just there for me, and, you know, I'll never forget this. He's hanging out with his friends, talking. It's, I mean, it's the best thing you could ask for, you know, to see him coming into your classroom and through the door every day.
Oh, I've never been so happy to see somebody upright. It's fantastic to see him walking, living his best life. I mean, it's, that's what we're here for. That's why we do what we do.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Public Comments on Agenda item. And before we sort of progress to that point, I would like to just thank Brent's team and just our staff for making sure that we know the great things that are going on throughout our district and being able to highlight it at the board meetings. Of course, you know, a lot of times our board meetings are just full of intense work so that we can make sure our students and families have access to a great education. So, it's good to kind of break the monotony of this work and really see the great things that's going on throughout our district. So, I appreciate that consideration for the communications team. So, at this point of our meeting, we will hear public comments from our agenda items only, whether they are discussion or action items. You will direct your comments to the Chair, and although we may not respond to you directly, there may be someone on staff that can respond to any questions or concerns that you may have before you leave. We do ask that you be mindful that we cannot discuss any private student or personnel information in our public settings. We ask to make sure that you're considerate of this space and just be kind and considerate of all those whom are here tonight. You will have three minutes to speak, and so the first person that we have tonight is Ms. Rhonda Mays.
Good evening, Chairwoman Woodbury, the Board, and Superintendent McManus. I am Rhonda Mays. I'm a school social worker in the district. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the state of our district, just to make a few comments. One thing that I've realized being in this district since 2000 is that our district, our students, our staff, we are not insulated from what's going on in the world around us. What we experience in our personal lives and what our students experience, we bring that into our buildings. One of the things that we have realized even more during this pandemic is how much our personal lives and personal experiences spill over into what we do each and every day. When our families, our children, our staff here in the district had to open up our homes to do our jobs, we invited people, our students, our colleagues into our homes, and they saw things in our homes that we may not have normally even let be revealed. With all of that being said, we must remember that we have to think about the social, emotional health of our students as well as the social, emotional health of our staff. Over this next, these next months, the next years, we're going to have to really think about how do we heal? How do we heal from the things that have happened? How do we heal from the deaths that we've experienced? How do we heal from the injustices that we've seen? It's going to take time, and we are all going to have to be patient with one another. I've been in this district since 2000. I've seen us come together in the time of need. I've seen us support each other. I hope we get back to that support of one another and understanding and giving grace. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Al Jabar.
Good evening, Board Chair Woodbury.
Good evening.
Superintendent McManus, Board Members. I see you added something to the agenda. And of course, we don't get a chance to react to that because we're already here. But let me say this, since the state of the district was put on the agenda, it gave leeway to talk about a lot of stuff. I'm concerned that I'm hearing staff saying that they are going on medical leave to come back and not be able to go back to their jobs they were on before. Not only that, moved into another job, and after the years passed, they will assume the pay of that job, which means essentially, I go out on medical leave and I could lose part of my salary. That's unacceptable. In terms of the pandemic, we've all had to go through different changes. But my concern is always basically with the children. What's going to happen to our children after summer school, who are still left behind? What are we putting in place for special needs for these kids? Also, I'm hearing from the parents, the staff, and community on the Brunson situation, and I've heard over Whemily that they want the Patterson Avenue site. Now, it bothers me when I hear a board member saying that they want another place, which says that we don't pay much attention. which says that we don't pay much attention to what the community and what the staff are calling for. So I'm hoping Ms. McManus will address a few of these things in her state of the district as she come forward to share with us, you and the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lastly, we have Ms. Michelle Jordan.
Good evening, Superintendent McManus, Chair Woodbury, and Board of Ed. How are you? I'm Michelle Jordan. You know me. I've been here before in the same shirt from two years ago when we were having the same conversation about site at Patterson. So I'm here to just speak on behalf of the staff and talk about just why we're excited about this site and why we want us to move forward with the action tonight and just get going with this. Because it's, like I said, two years. We had our community meeting two years ago. Some of you guys were there. We've had surveys now and we just, here we are two years later, still talking about it. What we're excited about is that it's near Innovation Corner. It's right there where we can tap in as a STEM school into a lot of the businesses that are there, be a part of mixer.org. There's all sorts of things that we can get into. We can have a bigger school that can house all of our residential students and the Magnet Program and our HAG program. We love the fact that we're going to be part of refurbishment of downtown and be a part of that exciting area of Industry Hill and all of those things. And part of what's unique about Brunson and just beyond like the staff and our amazing administration is that we really teach things and we look at our students as a whole child. And we talk about building character. And part of that is being stewards of the earth. And what fitting would that be for us to be reusing some land and repurposing and teaching and showing our community and our students that we don't just discard land, that we can actually sit there and reuse it and repurpose it and grow it into something beautiful again. So I just really want you guys to move forward with this. We're begging you. We've been begging for, gosh, more than two years and you know that. This has been going on for more than a decade now. So our community really deserves this. Our staff does, our students. You know, let's really be equitable. Let's have a school that is going to serve our downtown children and not just be one that's there for lottery purposes, right? We really need to have a school that serves this community. So I really hope that you guys vote to go forward with the next step so that we can actually get in there sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is discussion items. The first discussion item will be a board governance training update by Ms. Deborah Keys Wright, who is a consultant that has been working with our board. I think that there is no surprise from this community, because we're family, that this board has been definitely moving towards being a better board, working together. And I think Board Member Jones was very transparent, you know, several months ago when she said that we needed to work on ourselves before we brought anybody else into the fold of this level of governance. And so we took that to heart. And we actually was awarded a grant through the Winston-Salem Foundation to bring in someone to help us to build, to be a better governing board. And so Ms. Deborah Keys Wright is a trainer that works with urban school districts across our country. And she has seen it all. And so there was nothing we could show her that excited her. It was just a part of the work that she does across the country and working with urban school boards. Especially tonight, I just want to thank Ms. Wright because I know that she is going through, like a lot of us throughout the country, you know, just a lot of complications as it relates to family members and health. And so this board is very grateful for her to be able to come and update our community around the training that we have been doing and just to continue to support us as we grow as a board. And so I just wanted Ms. Keys Wright to know that this board is very thankful to you and that you and your family are in our prayers. And so we will now bring Ms. Keys Wright, well, she's coming in virtually, to give an update to the community about our board governance training. I think you're on mute too, Ms. Keys Wright.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can now, thank you.
Okay. Well, hello, board members and superintendent. I miss you guys.
Good evening.
I hope you're doing well. And so I'm so thankful that you asked me to come and share, especially to update the community. Because as you know, when we do our training, I tell you about how you are advocates and you are to keep the community informed. And so I appreciate you giving me this opportunity to give an overview of the work that we've done thus far. Next slide. There you go. And you can click it yet because I have it. One more click. There you go. Just a little bit about me, as Chair Woodbury mentioned. I've been working with boards for 20-plus years. And boards and superintendents started at the state level for 16 years and the national level for five years. And now three and a half, four years as an independent consultant. So even just as an independent consultant, over 50 districts I'm working with all around the country. And so this, I am definitely passionate about working with governance teams because my thought is to help board members be able to understand what their role is in conjunction with the superintendent so that the children are reaping the benefits. And so some of the areas of focus that I work on, the board soup relationships, data-driven decision-making, effective board practices, community engagement, board protocol, which are your board norms, your operating procedures, what you agree upon, how are you going to engage with each other? And doing board governance through the lens of equity is extremely, extremely important as well. Next slide. So just to give the community an idea about, you know, reasons why board members run, you can keep going, just let them come up. Because really, you know, there is no requirement for anyone to get training prior to being a board member. And so you have to make sure, of course, you want people to be passionate about children. But these are some of the reasons why individuals run. You know, they have a child in the district and they want to have a direct impact. They love politics. You know, I tell board members, you know, they're like, "Oh, I'm not a politician." I say, "Oh, yes, you are. Yes, you are a politician now." And so what you are to do was best for your students. They want to serve and support the district and they believe that they can make a difference. And so because there is not a requirement by law that you have to have training, that's why it's so important for, you know, for this board to say, "We want to get professional learning." And so, because it's not required. You can, you know, the next slide please. You can, you know, minimal requirements. You know, be at least 18 years of age, a citizen of your state, a resident of your district, and registered voter. Very few requirements and popular enough to be voted in. That's basically, you know, the requirements to be a school board member. It's on-the-job training. You know, I always, you know, say that, you know, board members, I will never say that they're not educated. I do say that they are not the education expert. And so there is a distinct role between what the board does and what the superintendent does. Always visualizing going down the highway, board members in one lane, superintendent in the other lane, all going in the same direction for the good of the district. And so that's what it looks like for a board, you know, very minimal requirements. And so these individuals are passionate about the work, but they have to come together and learn how to govern because it is not like anything else. You can be a CEO of your own company. It is not the same when you sit at that board table. Next slide, please. You know, the main thing is it has to be student-centered. Those are your constituents. Those children are your constituents. They are not old enough to vote for you, but they are truly your constituents. So all your decision-making is done based upon, you know, student focus at all times. Next slide, please. So let's talk about what an effective boardsmanship looks like. We can always find out what dysfunctional behavior looks like. It's very difficult to find out, you know, what does an effective board look like? So here it is. A school board plays an important watchdog role in keeping your local school on track and setting policies that affect children in your district. Next one. Set the vision and the goals of the school district and hold the district accountable. Everyone needs to be held accountable in the district. There are no passes on that from the boardroom to the classroom. And anyone who engages with students should be held accountable. One board member cannot do this job alone. That's why there are nine individuals. Everyone has a vote and everyone has a voice at the table. Board members just have to learn how to work collaboratively, learn how to build consensus, understanding the perspective that each individual is bringing to the board table. Everyone has their own lived experience. And that's the uniqueness of having different individuals being voted in, elected in to represent the community. And so that's the very important piece on what it looks like when board members finally get to the table. You know, you stay focused on the vision and the goals and you cannot do this by yourself. The Board of Education is powerful when it is the board together. Once that gavel is hit though, and the board dispersed, it is no longer the Board of Education. There are board members, okay? And so no one board member can give a directive to the superintendent or staff, even though you have one staff person, which is your superintendent. And so it's the collectiveness of that nine members that is so important when you make your decisions. Because all the different perspectives and the lived experiences and understanding of the public education landscape helps you make an informed decision. So that is what's extremely, extremely important. You know, but there are characteristics, though, of a board, of what an effective board looks like. And it's basically, you know, it's pretty complex. It involves evaluating virtually all aspects of the board, from internal, virtually all the function of the board, from internal governance policies, formulations, to communications with teachers, building administrators, and the public. Okay, but research says that these characteristics right here, eight characteristics, which are from the Center for Public Education, they're a characteristic that will help you be an effective board. And this is what I go over with this, with your board here. You know, you define your clear goals toward the vision. You have that strong shared belief that students are, you know, what's possible for students and their ability to learn and the system and its ability to teach all children at the highest level, okay? Have a collaborative, well, accountability. And I could never say enough about accountability-driven, get everyone being held accountable. Board members spending less time on operational issues and more time focused on policies that will improve student achievement. And you will see what the role is when I get into, you know, talking about who does what as far as the board and the superintendent in a slide coming shortly. The next one. You have the collaborative relationship with the community. This is so important in establishing a strong communication structure to inform and engage both your internal and your external stakeholders in setting and achieving district goals. This is a partnership. You know, you continue to engage your community because they have elected you to represent the needs of your community. And a key thing here, you know, aligning your reach or being data savvy. So important. Your data should drive you to make decisions. What I say to boards, the data should make you do it. And there are different data points that you use, not just one data dashboard. Different pieces of data that will help inform you in your continuous improvement. So it's extremely important for a board to be data savvy. It's pretty much asking the right questions to make sure you get the right data. Pretty much, where were we? Where are we now? And where did we say we want to be when we're looking at data, okay? Aligning and sustaining your resources to meet the district goals. You are responsible for being a good steward of the budget. You know, your communities are trusting that you are going to make those decisions that are really being good stewards of that budget. You know, your professional development, making sure that it meets the goals. Not only professional development for board members, but also making sure that there are resources there for your staff, for the teachers and the principals, for, I'm going to say, not your staff, for the superintendent's staff. To make sure that they get the training that they need so that, you know, whatever they need in order to educate children to the highest level, that there's finances there to give them that. And so it's so important to make sure that you, you know, allocate the monies in a way that will support for the teaching staff as well. Leading as a united team. The governance team is the board and the superintendent. It's not just the board. It is the board and the superintendent to lead together, showing, you know, doing your respective roles with strong collaboration and mutual trust and respect for each other. It is extremely important. The superintendent is the education expert. You hire that person to be the expert in what the needs are in the educational realm for the students. And the board is the big picture, ensuring that the district is being run properly, not running the district. And of course, partaking in professional development, which this board is committed to. They do a phenomenal job when we're together, really understanding their role. And they want to know. And that's the key thing with a board, because it's not required. So I'm really appreciative of this board saying that they want to know how to be an effective team. Let's go to the next slide. This is just my quick visual. The board is very familiar with this. I think this is good for the community to see, to understand what does it look like as far as the board authority and the superintendent's authority. It is this clock. And the board's authority, you will always see me do this. The board stays at that 30,000-foot balcony view to ensure that the district is running properly, making the policies, adopting the vision and the goals to ensure that the superintendent can implement the policies and deal with the regulations and the plans and implement everything that the board is asking of the superintendent. This is how this clock works. So the superintendent is below that dotted line. But you see, it is a dotted line where the board and the superintendent do engage with each other, ensuring that everyone knows what's going on. But the board is oversight, truly oversight. So some community people, you know, members may not understand that board members don't hire the teachers and the principals and other staff. The superintendent is the sole, the only staff person for the board. And that is the most important position there as far as ensuring that you have the proper person in that seat so that they know how to, you know, do the day-to-day operations, engaging, hiring the right people, even though they're giving recommendations to the board for approval. But that is totally up to the superintendent. So I always like to share this visual so that the community can understand, you know, the role. And it is circular. So you see, it just continues to go. You have the evaluation process of your superintendent, principals, and teachers. By law, they must be evaluated. Board members don't have to be evaluated, other than if you could say, "Well, we can evaluate them every four years at the election." Yep, you sure can. But we don't want to wait that way. So when the board says, "No, we want to monitor ourselves. We want to make sure that we are doing what's right." Because at the end of the day, it is all about the students. And we can't spend a lot of time focusing on what adults want. It's about children. This is the business we're in, educating children, ensuring that they have the best educational experience while going through your school system. And so when you hand them that diploma that you have prepared them for college, life skills, career, or whatever, that is the role of the board to ensure that we have things in place, working with the superintendent to educate our children to the highest level, to be competitive with children outside of your district and to go on to do phenomenal things. Next slide. So truly what the role is, in a nutshell, just a quick visual for you. Policy-making. That's what the board is about, setting policies. Because setting those policies is really driving the direction of the district. So that is truly one of the top three important roles. Hiring the CEO, your superintendent. The second, you know, responsibility. And planning and goal-setting, approving the master plan that defines your goals and your objectives. And again, being good stewards of the budget. The budget is really... The budget is really driven administratively, but the board has to have a clear understanding of the what, the big picture, of what the financial needs are, and they have to approve. So if you're going to approve anything, as I share with the board, you have to understand, you know, the multimillion-dollar budgets and understand at the governance level, not going below, I can see in that dotted line, wondering, who do we purchase our mulch from? It doesn't matter. You know, the superintendent and staff can decide that. What you need to know, make sure, of course, that the board knows, do we have the financial, the monies there to pay for beautifying all of our buildings? That's how a governance team thinks and really engages with what's going on in the district. Next slide. And these are just a few of the board's responsibilities. Now here's a few, just a few of the superintendents. Again, serving as the CEO of the district, carrying out the law, develops the regulations and the procedures of the school system that are aligned with the policies developed by the board. The board develops policies. The superintendent can also develop policies, but the board is the only one who can approve policy. And so the superintendent, this is that partnership. It's not the board and the superintendent. It is a governance team. The superintendent assists and advises the board in creating goals. The superintendent knows the needs of her staff as far as what was in a strategic plan. But the board has to have an understanding that this is the direction that we want to go, superintendent. Now, you're going to tell us, how are you going to implement this? This is that partnership that boards and superintendents have, working toward the goals established by the board, advising the board on the policy development and creating and implementing administrative procedures to carry out policy. If the board sets policies, it is up to the superintendent, of course, to implement it and carry it out. And so that her staff will know, this is the board's policy, and so this is what we have to do. Your agendas will show that, will support with the policies. Your strategic plan supports whatever you have on your agenda. It should align with what's in your strategic plan. So this is how boards and superintendents work together. Being very strategic, strategic goals, big picture, superintendent and staff will implement it. Next slide. In a nutshell, here's the difference. The board sets policies, goals, accountability, and community leadership. That's the work of the board, engaging with the community, ensuring, asking the superintendent, what do you have in place to hold everyone accountable? And making sure that there are policies in place and goals in your strategic plan that will show the community that this is the direction that this district is going. And we have policies in place that will assist everyone in the district of understanding exactly what the board expects of this district. Superintendent is staff, the total operation, and the educational leadership. It is up to the superintendent, of course, and her staff to ensure that the best education experience is happening with your scholars and making sure that she's hiring the right individuals who are teaching your scholars daily. Anyone who's engaging with students. Again, accountability is woven through here as well. So when you just look at this, this is the major difference between what the board's role and the superintendent's role is. Next slide. So the nature of governance. Here it is. Governance is steering the ship. Management is doing the rowing. So visually, I'm such a visual person. Now, if you think about someone steering the ship and someone rowing in an opposite direction, you're not getting anywhere. So that's why it's so important that the superintendent and the board are on the same page, they're understanding we're going in the same direction, okay? And governance is the process where the direction of the district, it is set by the board. The structure is established, and that's by hiring the superintendent, making sure that your policies are in place and accountability, both fiscal and programmatic, is assured. That's the board's role. And just this area, there are other things that the board is responsible for. But just if you focus on this, will keep any board extremely busy. Because you have to know all of the interwork, all the functions of the district without doing the work, just ensuring that the work is done. And then my favorite book, this last one, Governing, is about the what. I always do my hand, the what, the big picture of the district and the superintendent and staff is the how. The policy gets implemented, okay? So asking the right questions. Board members have to pose the big-picture questions instead of, how are you doing this? Or why are you not doing this? No, it's basically, what process do you have in place, superintendent, to address X, Y, Z? That's how the governance team will ask questions. Ask for data, absolutely. And so, but boards working with each other, to have such a big board as this one, the board has to have an agreement amongst themselves that, okay, how are we going to interact with our superintendent? We can't have all of the nine different ways of communicating. So this is what the protocols and the board norms look like, an agreed-upon way of how we're going to interact. And that's the work that I've been doing with the board. Next slide. So I had to give you that foundation first to help you understand now the work. Because if you don't understand what the role of the board is and understanding that there are no requirements to even understand this work, and you can sit at this board table and make some major decisions. That's why it's so important to get that foundation first of making sure you understand the true role so that you know how to navigate through this, you know, governing, if you will. And so the work I've been doing with the board is very interactive. It's not a sit-and-get. We break into small breakout rooms because they are doing some work. We read articles that support, you know, systems thinking, understanding protocols, understanding how to develop goals and things of that nature. And of course, homework. They also get homework. Because at the end, we will develop a governance action plan. So the type of training that I do is not just come in and we'll do a training and then we're done. Mine is very systemic. And so I think this is so helpful for any board to look at it in that way. Because there needs to be continuous learning, just like it's required for the teaching staff and the principal and superintendent. It should also be a professional learning opportunity for the board. So next slide. So this is what it looks like. The first session was about, again, really drilling down. And I just gave you guys an overview. But we really did drill down into what the roles are and make it, compare it to some issues, not issues, some things that were going on, concerns that happen in any district. And just like, you know, Chair Woodbury said, I've been working with boards all over the country. I started out my career working with some of the boards that no one wanted to work with. So board behavior is what I address. And so there isn't anything that surprises me, and it's not just unique to this board. These, you know, things that occur, interaction with board members, engaging, trying to get to know each other while they're trying to do the work. All of this is very normal things that go on. Not, sometimes people don't normally get, you know, they don't usually know the individual that they're going to be on the board with. And so you're multitasking, trying to build relationships while you're trying to learn this job as well. And so we worked on that, looking at best practices. And what I share with the board is research-based. It's not just what Deborah wants you to know, even though I have the experience to kind of guide you in different areas. It is research-based. So I will always say, if it has been research-based and it equates to an effective, high-performing board and district, why not try it? And so that's what we're doing. We focused on leadership. And this was about building capacity of the board to govern and lead strategically in an effective manner by focusing on the habits of what a high-impact board looks like. What kind of characteristics do we need to have in order to be effective so that our community can see that we are taking this job very seriously? Data-driven decision-making. You know, this one provides boards with clarifications about the different types of data for the strategic and tactical administrative operational roles of the board. It's so important to let the data drive you to do this work. So board members, again, will have to know, what type of questions do I ask? How do I know what data I'm going to need? And that's what we go through as well. And that should be data, not dates, sorry about that. Next one, go ahead. Equity and excellence. This session, we will begin a preliminary conversation about equality, equity goals, and discussions where to start the board in this area. It needs to start at the governance level. And we'll prepare the governance team to have a clear understanding of the difference between equity versus equality and how to be intentional about addressing historical institutional and structural inequities that are happening. And at the end, like I said, this last one, we will have a governance action plan, culmination of all of the sessions. And we will create an action plan that will be very instrumental in creating principles of governance that the board can refer back to. And again, it's building this foundation for effective governance. Last slide here. And the end goal, again, I will always begin with students, end with students. This is what it's about, making decisions what's best for your scholars, your brilliant scholars. Board members have to make really good, the best decisions based upon, and being informed through presentations, through reading, through the research, the data, in order to make the best decisions for your scholars. And the next slide is just the end, my contact information. And so I only had a short period of time to give you some information. So I don't know if we have any time or if it's allowed. Chair Woodbury, and if your audience wanted to ask me questions, whatever your preference is, but they definitely, I'm sure you can make this PowerPoint available to them. But in a nutshell, this is the governance work. This is what governance is. Really helping board members understand their role to work collaboratively with the superintendent so that the students will reap all of the benefits. So that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Keyswright. I think that in our board kind of dynamics, the audience not able to ask you any questions, but the board members at this time, if they have any questions or comments, this is the time for any of our board members to ask any questions or make any comments before we let you go this evening. And I would just, again, like to say thank you for being so intentional about sharing with our community actually what we are doing, what we have done, and the continuation of the training so that we can be a great and effective, you know, board that works together for the good of our students. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Keyswright. We look forward to seeing you at our next session.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The next item on our discussion is the Arts Education Resolution by Nicolette Grant, our chief academic officer.
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, Vice Chair Calvert-Hayes, board members, and Mrs. McManus. I'm very pleased this evening to bring forth a resolution to support arts and education. We recognize the value and the importance of the arts in the lives of our students. The arts are an integral part of a well-balanced education, and it's an integral part to supporting the whole child. And so what we've shared tonight, or will be sharing tonight, is a brief video from our state superintendent, Catherine Truitt, to support the Music and Our Schools Month.
Hello, my name is Catherine Truitt, and I'm the superintendent of Public Instruction. It is a privilege to join students, teachers, parents, and communities as we celebrate National Music in Our Schools Month. For those of you who I haven't met, allow me to introduce myself. My service in education began in the classroom, where I spent 10 years at both the high school and middle school levels and three years as a turnaround coach in high popery schools. Music has always been an integral part of my life and the life of my family. The daughter of musicians, piano lessons were not optional growing up. As a student, I studied piano while attending a performing arts high school and during that time accompanied the choirs at my school as well. I love music and love the thrill of performing. It's not just me who loves music. My father, as a young spirited 75-year-old, continues to serve as a middle school band director in Ohio. Despite the challenges of the pandemic, he has worked long hours, learning new software and technology, just like many of our music teachers here in North Carolina. He has, like many of you, jumped through these technology groups so that his students could continue to make music despite the challenges of remote learning. His commitment to students is the standard for all music educators. Your dedication to your craft during these times has been extraordinary. While remote and hybrid learning have presented extraordinary challenges to students and educators, music teachers have met these challenges with compassion and dedication. It has been incredible to see students continue to learn music and perform despite the pandemic. And it speaks so powerfully to the value of educating the whole child. I can't wait to see what incredible things you continue to accomplish with your students. As a fellow musician, I want to thank you for your dedication and tireless commitment to the children of North Carolina.
Thank you. And we would like to also thank all of our music teachers, our arts teachers, visual arts teachers, theater teachers, dance teachers, let's make sure I didn't forget anyone, chorus. Thank you so much, media arts. Thank you for what you do for children. Thank you for bringing joy and love and creativity and expression for our students. I'd also like to thank our Arts Education Department, led under the leadership of Brad Oliver and his team, for always bringing the arts up front for our students. And so for tonight's agenda, we would just like to just share with the public that the arts are education pledge that's on the website and also included in our board minutes tonight, to think about the ways that we can contribute and support the arts. And we want to thank the board for always supporting the arts for our students in Winston-Salem. And then finally, just want to make a shameless plug. We are accepting applications for summer school, and we are looking for arts and music teachers to support our students so that they can engage in really creative and meaningful ways of expression through our summer program. So thank you. I don't know if there are any questions, but thank you.
If there are no questions for Ms. Grant, then I think you have another discussion item, which is the Comprehensive Memorandum of Agreement between Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools and Forsyth Tech Community College.
Yes, thank you. Extremely excited. Just want the community to know that we have worked for, I don't know, the last six months, I think, working collaboratively with central office staff, principals, and the Forsyth Tech Community College partners. And what we've presented to the board tonight is a comprehensive memorandum of agreement that outlines all of the various ways that we partner with Forsyth Tech. I think previously, we've had lots of little MOAs floating around and lots of different agreements, and we tried to make it as comprehensive as possible. And so what we're bringing forward tonight is a three-year memorandum of agreement with Forsyth Tech to support our students. It has an automatic renewal as part of the agreement. As long as both parties agree, it will automatically renew at the end of that three-year term. And within the memorandum of agreement, the things that we've specifically outlined are our career and college promise programs, which are our pathways, the college transfer, CTE pathways, our comprehensive innovation high schools, early and middle colleges. We've also outlined the NC Works Career Coach Program, college advising, college lift, grant opportunities that we want to partner with together, our local articulation credits, and our adult high school. We've also specifically outlined within this memorandum of agreement our commitment to Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy and making sure the students in the preparatory academy have the skills that they need to be successful in college. And we're particularly looking at a teacher cadet program with Forsyth Tech. So I just wanted to present this on behalf of a very large team that's been working. And also thank you to our legal team for helping us to make sure we dotted the i's and have everything well-written and well-documented for this partnership. And we're really excited to work with Forsyth Tech. This does support our goal two of our strategic plan for dual enrollment and helping our students be successful in CTE courses as well. Are there any questions about the memorandum?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the superintendent's budget request by Ms. Andrea Gillis, our chief financial officer. Officer.
Good evening, Board Members, Chair Woodbury, and Superintendent McManus. Tonight, I'm going to review with you the 21-22 Superintendent Budget Recommendation. So, for fiscal year 21-22, our proposed budget is comprised of $370 million in state funds, $257 million in federal grants, and you see the little asterisk there. A $200 million of that is the ESER 2 and ESER 3 funds that we've recently been awarded. We have $149.4 million in a local current expense fund, and $15.1 million in other restricted/special revenue, for a total operating budget of $792 million. In addition, we have a $4.4 million capital outlay budget, a $27.2 million charter nutrition budget for a grand total, and our proposed budget of $823.7 million. So now, we're going to talk about the uses of funds. Eighty-seven percent of our budget is salaries and benefits. Another 7% is purchase services, 4% is supplies, and 1% is charter schools. Some of the proposed budget highlights in this year's budget includes 31 and 1/2 additional teacher positions for hospital 90 class reduction. That happened about four years ago. This is our last year to receive these teachers. We got a total of 126 teachers to lower our class sizes for K-3. In addition, we have an estimated retirement rate for 21-22 of, the rate's going to increase to 23.2% for fiscal year 21-22. This is a 7.1% increase over the current rate of 21.6%. Now, this increase is an estimate based on the three years of average increase in the history of the retirement rate increases. We also estimate that the health insurance premium is going to go up to 64.78. This is also based on the three-year average. That's a 2.4% increase over the current premium of 63.26. The budget also includes an estimated 3% increase for teachers and certified staff and assistant principals. This is including the staff. This is also, this is all based on state legislation, so we're hoping that the 3% increase will come to fruition, but if that does happen, we will need that 3% in our local budget to fund the 3% for our locally-funded staff. We also estimate that there's going to be a salary increase for classified staff. We're also estimating 3% increase for that, for those staff as well. This is also dependent on state legislation. The county projects that we're going to receive $17.6 million in sales tax revenue from Article 46, which is a quarter cent sales tax increase. That is 6 and 1/2 million above the 11.1 million received in 2021. 1.1 million of that, however, is, has to be allocated to charter schools based on, you know, state law. Every time our funding increase, we have to give charter schools their proportionate share. That leaves 5.4 million in an increase that will fund, a local teacher supplement increase for 21-22. We have not decided yet how we're going to allocate that increase, but we're working with compensation and HR to make sure we get that to the, get options to the board before we start the next fiscal year. District has also been evaluating the compensation of non-teacher classified and non-certified staff. During fiscal year 2021, as you recall, we brought increases to the board for bus drivers, custodians, teacher assistants, therapists, and charter nutrition staff. Funding of $2 million is included in this budget to adjust other employee groups and to keep Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools competitive in the job market. We also have funds in our budget for sustaining operations. In August, we'll be opening a new Lewisville Middle School, and Virtual Academy will open this year as a standalone school. Last year, it opened as a school, but the students were enrolled in their homeschool. This year, they'll be enrolled in Virtual Academy. So, we'll need additional staffing for that school, as well as staffing for Lewisville Middle, and we'll need money for utilities for Lewisville, because it's a new school, new square footage. We also have a utility rate increase in our budget. Electricity's going up 3%, and natural gas is going up 11.75%. That's going to cost us about $318,000. And then, as I mentioned before, we have $1.1 million allocated in our budget to increase the charter school allocation for their proportionate share of our revenue increase from the county. As I mentioned before, the ESER funds are included in this budget, approximately $200 million of those funds for next year, 21-22. As you recall, we received $215 million approximately. We're going to spend some of that this year, so next year, that will be carryover in our budget, because we're hoping to get all the funds this year. The plans on use of those funds has not been finalized yet, so the funds, if you look in your budget book, they'll be in that unbudgeted number on the, if you look on page, let me see. Page seven. So, on page seven, you'll see that very, that very last number is huge, it's the unbudgeted funds. That's what we have the funds right now, because I wanted to include them in our budget for transparency, but because we have not finalized our budget yet, and how we're going to spend those funds, I just put it in unbudgeted, but when we adopt, it'll be spread out amongst all the different purpose codes once we finalize our plan. District leaders will gather input from stakeholders over the next few weeks, and once that input is received, the staff will present a plan to the board that is aligned to our strategic plan. And just to give you a reminder of how these funds can be used, funds may be used in a wide variety of ways in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, including technology, sanitizing and cleaning facilities, repairing and improving school facilities to reduce risk of transmission, developing procedures and systems to improve preparedness and response efforts, planning and implementing activities for long-term closures, providing mental health services and supports, and planning and implementing activities related to summer learning at the school programs, and obviously addressing learning loss. So, these are the main categories that we're going to put forth and get input on from our stakeholders. And just as a reminder, these, the ESER 2 funds expire on September 30th, 2023, and the ESER 3 funds expire September 30th, 2024. Right here is a snapshot of the county budget request. If you look at, we adopted our budget at $132.7 million. We got $2.9 million additional funds back in December. That gave us a total base budget of $135.6. We have the required salary and benefit increases of 1.7 million, as described earlier. We also have a 3% salary increase included, as well as the $5.4 million for the Article 46 sales tax increase and compensation adjustments for staff of $2 million. And then, in the sustaining operation section, we have about $2.1 million for those items that I spoke about earlier, Lewisville Middle School, utility rate, and charter school increases, for a grand total of $147.8 million in county funds in the operating budget, the current expense fund. That's a $12 million increase over what we received this year. I'm not going to go over the entire budget book with you, but you have it. If you have any questions, please email me, but I guess to give you an overview, it's similar to the one you received last year. The first section is the overview, second section is the overall budget, broken down in different categories by fund, by revenue source, by type of revenue source, and also by purpose. The third section is the county budget broken down by, you know, by purpose and function as well, and a description of the increases that we asked for is on page 22. It gives you like a little write-up about what we're asking for and why. The next section is the capital budget, and then we have the student nutrition budget. We have results accountability, and if you notice, the academic achievement results are from the prior year, because we didn't really get any results this year due to pandemic, so I just included the prior year results. We have trends and statistics, which talks about our student population trends, and then we have the departmental budget section, which is the section that, you know, that has the meat of the budget, broken down by department. I've included last year's actuals, last year's, I mean, I'm sorry, the 1920 actuals, the 2021 adopted, the 2022 proposed, and then a breakdown of what the new increase amount is for that, for that department. I've also listed the strategic goal alignment for that department in, on the page as well. Once we get our ESER funds budgeted and aligned, we'll present a complete alignment of the strategic plan with the budget, because I wanted to do it this time, but because $200 million of our budget is unplanned for, we don't know what the strategic alignment will be yet. Once we get that alignment, I'll report to you how we've aligned our entire budget to the strategic plan. And then, after the department section, there's appendices that has salary schedules from last year. So, are there any questions?
So, we need to have the budget for the ESER funds pretty much in line by what, May?
Well, we have to, we have to have it presented, I mean, I'm sorry, we have to have it submitted to DPI by May. We're going to go ahead and present a plan that staff came up with. However, we're going to get feedback, and we can pivot on that plan. We just want to submit something so we can approve.
Right, we can amend it, right.
Yeah, we're going to submit, we're going to submit a preliminary plan to get approved, but we can always, also, we can do an amendment once we get all our feedback, and then, you know, shift gears. The funds last for three years, so there's no, you know, there's no way they're going to have us, hold us to whatever our original plan is, because we're going to pivot, you know, and make changes. So, once we get our community feedback and our stakeholder feedback, we will revise our plan and submit a new plan, but we wanted to go ahead and get, you know, a good plan in now, so we can get our funds and get it approved.
And that's important, because if we don't submit our plan, we don't get our, we wouldn't get our money, right?
Yeah, if we don't submit by May 6, we have to wait until the fall to get our funds.
So, my question is, the increase, there was like an 11% increase in natural gas and a 3%, I think for electric. Is that based on trend, like, that's based on projection?
It's based on a, I mean, I guess it's based on a projection from the utility companies. They notify you when there's going to be an increase.
Okay. Thank you.
Our maintenance department keeps track of that. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, and I know you explained it when we met not too long ago, but I'm still a little confused on the charter schools. Can you tell me exactly how much we are putting out for charter schools? And you said this is state-regulated, is that correct?
Yes, it's, charter, so by state law, charter schools get a proportionate share of county revenue that we get. So, as our county revenue increases, they will get their proportionate share. And so, how we calculate charter school calculation is we take the total number of students, well, you know, we take that on an average, total number of students we have, total number of students that charter schools have, to get a total number of Forsyth County students. And we divide that number into the county appropriation, or, you know, the current expense fund that they get their share of, to get a per-people number. Then you multiply that per-people number times the number of kids that they have to get the total amount that's due to charter schools.
And could you kind of give me a roundabout figure as to what that normally amounts to for charter schools?
It's a couple thousand dollars per student on a yearly basis. So, and, you know, like I said, it depends on the funds we have and the number of students they have. As their, if their population goes down and ours goes up, the per-people share goes down. If our population goes down and theirs goes up, the per-people amount goes up for them. So, it's all, so it's a, you know, we consolidate the number of kids that are totally in Forsyth County that attend charters and public schools.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, feel free to email me if you have any questions, and I'll be happy to respond to them. We will, we'll be bringing this back to you in the first meeting in May for approval, hopefully, and we'll be presenting to the county commissioners on May 14th, I believe. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a great budget book that you created for us, so it's, I won't lose it, that's for sure. It's very nicely colored. Thank you for your attention to this.
It'll be on the, it'll be on the left tomorrow.
Okay. The next discussion item is the District Code of Character Conduct and Support Engage in Schools contract by Dr. Jesse Prade, our Deputy Superintendent, and Effie McMillan, our Executive Director of Equity.
Good evening, Chairperson Woodbury, Superintendent McManus, and school board members. Tonight, we have Engage in Schools here to share some additional information about their process to use to revise our student code of conduct. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle from Engage in School, who will introduce her team for a short presentation.
Good evening. I'm M.J. Austin, Program Consultant, North Carolina, Norlina, North Carolina.
You're muted, Carol. Good evening, my name's Michelle Tassier, and I'm the Director of Program from Denver, Colorado.
Good evening, everyone. I am Larry Derringer. I am the Executive Director of Engage in Schools from Cambridge, Massachusetts.
And I am Carol Lieber, Senior Consultant, and live in Quarryville, Pennsylvania.
Next slide, please.
They're actually uploading your presentation right now, so if you can give us a few minutes, we'll let you know, okay? It's loaded now, so, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. All right. Next slide, please. Here was the outcome for our session. Please take a moment to read. Next slide, please. We want to acknowledge and appreciate at the start that this is courageous work. It's hard work. It's creative work, and it's the work that will achieve equitable outcomes for each and every student. We noticed that the goals for code recalibration align with the objectives in your strategic plan. Next slide, please.
When our team supports a district to move from recalibration to implementation of a code of character, conduct, and support, it involves four phases. In Phase 1, we support the district to take a look at three years' worth of disciplinary data to establish a baseline on which to work. In Phase 2, we gather multiple stakeholder groups from across the district in strategic ways to both refine current sections of the code, develop new sections of the code, and eventually publish a code. In Phase 3, we orient all stakeholder groups in the district to major shifts in policies, structures, and practices to ground everybody in a starting point. And in Phase 4, we co-support the district to implement a professional learning plan that really meets the interests and needs of various stakeholders in the district to make sure that the code is implemented with fidelity and integrity across all those groups in service of children. Next slide.
We'd like you to take a look at the specific outcomes that informed the code recalibration work. We'll share two slides, one that shows what will decrease, and another that will show what will increase. So, take a moment and read through the first set of outcomes. Next slide, please. When a code is successfully recalibrated and implemented, you would see these increases. Take a moment again to read. Next slide, please.
We know that different students need different types of support to be successful. A multi-tiered system of support ensures that every student gets the support they need, and that is about equity. Code work addresses all three MTSS levels. It addresses core promotion and prevention strategies accessible to every student, supplemental and intensive interventions when students need more saturated support to become socially, emotionally, and academically skillful. We'd like to share two different impact stories that live in different tiers of support. Next slide.
The first impact story is from an urban elementary school in the northeast, around 800 students, demographics 48% African-American, about 18% white, and 14% Latin. and 14% Latinx, and the remaining student body multirace. 90% of the student body was on free and reduced lunch. The school leaders in this particular urban elementary school with a code implementation team, a culture-climate team, took three strategic steps to support equity and students in the school. The first step they took was to train all teachers in a structured practice called morning gathering. Teachers implemented morning gathering at the start of the day for 20 to 30 minutes every single day of the week. And in that structure, students learned key social-emotional learning skills that they both learned and they, and they practiced in that context, which really helped transition into the day, make connections with each other, social connections with each other, and prepare for learning. And those SEL skills were used throughout the day. The second step that culture-climate team took with the leaders was to embed what is called a peace place in every single classroom. This was a prevention strategy that when students started to, you know, started to feel emotionally unwell, could self-select to go to this peace place, or the teacher could ask them to go to the peace place. And in that place, it was a designated space where resources were available to kids to find their equilibrium, to calm down, to quickly re-enter the lesson of the day. It's preventative because it didn't require the student to leave the classroom. The last step that that school leader took with the culture-climate team was to institute a reset room. This was a place where kids went when they were really engaged in unskillful behavior in the classroom and/or were emotionally unravelling. The teacher referred that student with dignity to the reset room, where there was a skilled teacher, again with multiple resources to help the student calm down, reflect on what was going on, find a way back into that classroom to participate in the learning again. As a result of those three strategic steps, the promotion, the prevention, and the intervention steps taken, these were the outcomes in this urban elementary school. So, just take a moment. Next slide, please.
This next story is of an urban high school of about 1,200 students, and it focuses on implementing more equitable and consistent disciplinary responses that live within code of conduct violations. As you can see from the graphic, there were four APs in this high school. Each was in charge of discipline for one grade level. In reviewing the referral data in the school, we noticed that APs assigned at different consequences for the same behavior violation of fighting. Each AP used their own authority and judgment, their discretion, to determine disciplinary responses. AP number one called a parent and assigned detention. AP number two assigned a one-day in-school suspension. A third AP assigned a five-day suspension out of school, and a fourth AP conference with each student and assigned no further consequences or interventions. Next slide, please. We know that biases influence these different determinations of consequences. Racial biases often result in more severe consequences that do lead to more negative outcomes for students of color. Racial biases in combination with other biases that you see here in the graphic can produce a disparate impact on many subgroups of students. Next slide. So, for reasons of equity and fairness, the school wanted to standardize consequences for the most typical violations. So, 95% of the time, 95% of students were receiving the same consequences for the same violation. Equally important was an effort to standardize restorative interventions aligned to these consequences. So, here are some of the action steps they took. They formed grade-level support teams of APs, counselors, and social workers who met twice weekly. Ritualized agendas enabled them to review all relevant data, identify students who needed further support, and assign standardized interventions that were the best fit for different behavior violations. Grade-level support teams also closed the communication loop with teachers by sharing steps that they had taken and then encouraging follow-up support and progress monitoring. Next slide. This institutional wraparound care resulted in decreases in referrals and suspensions for all students. The most dramatic impact was a 30% reduction in freshman referrals and suspensions, especially for special education students and students of color. Next slide.
Aligning standardized accountable consequences to restorative interventions achieved these results. Improve school climate. I feel connected, included. I belong here. Improve student-adult relationships. I feel respected, known, and heard. I trust you. When an accountable restorative approach is systematically embedded in a district, schools become more committed to helping students on their journey through school. You will see a reduction in referrals and suspensions. Next slide.
We want to close with a story about a whole district. The Syracuse City School District in central New York is a richly diverse district. Take a moment to look at the demographic information on the slide. A report the year prior to approval of the new code showed that Syracuse was suspending 30.8% of students compared to the national average of 11.3%. Disproportional suspension of students for the same infractions from certain subgroups, such as Black or African-American and special education students, was also significantly higher than national averages. Next slide, please. So, this is the first of two charts showing information that changed over time. You can see that in 2011, 2012, 2013, the year prior to the new code, there were more than 32,000 instructional days lost in Syracuse due to suspension, both in-school and out-of-school. By 2015-16, three years after the new code was launched and implementation was underway, this number had dropped by half. In the same timeframe, the same three-year timeframe, the number of district-wide in-school and out-of-school suspensions combined dropped by over 40%. Next slide, please. During the 2014-15 to 2016-17 period, a significant improvement occurred in disproportionality, the gap between Black or African-American students and white students in the use of office disciplinary referrals in secondary schools. Though both groups saw significant decreases in ODRs, the decrease toward Black or African-American students was significantly larger, narrowing the gap with their peers. You can see that on the, the narrowing gap between the two lines of this chart. The implementation of a recalibrated code of character, conduct, and support in the Syracuse City School District resulted in significant shifts away from punishment and exclusionary discipline to policies and systems and practices that are restorative, accountable, and equitable, with a variety of positive outcomes for students. Next slide, please.
With code work, we'd like to use the image of gears to show the interdependence among school systems, structures, and practices. Changes in one gear will impact changes in others. Recalibration of a code, for example, impacts teachers who build capacity to implement standardized core promotion and prevention strategies across the district to really reduce disciplinary problems in the classroom. Code work places an emphasis on families and caregivers as partners, thus raising expectations for improved school home communication and problem solving. And code work is also a catalyst for building more effective case management structures and intervention practices. Because changes in code policies and practices impact all staff, districts need to consider the kind of support and professional learning that will enable everyone to implement revised code policies and practices with integrity. Next slide.
The recalibration of a district code includes multiple stakeholder groups. Groups that are involved in final decision-making are on the left, and the other groups are involved in drafting, sharing their concerns, and vetting key sections of the code. Take a look at the slide and take a look at the number of people involved in supporting a new code. Having so many different stakeholder voices involved builds understanding, commitment, shared language, and accountability for this work. So, in closing, this work is about the capacity to change the trajectory of children's lives and become a north star achieving genuine equity for all students and families. Thank you.
Any board members have, I guess, questions for the Engage team before, I guess, Effie McMillan comes up and, I guess, supplement information that they've shared with us?
So, I have a quick question. So, the, the data in Syracuse, it looked like it was till 2017. Did you all leave the district, that district at that time? And if you did, was it sustainable? Have you looked at the data for 2018 or 2019?
I, I think the question is to someone on the Engage team, and maybe someone was speaking, maybe?
I think it, I think it was.
Okay, Mr. Derringer, were you speaking? Yes, sir. Okay, go ahead. You, you were muted, sorry.
Sorry. We began work, we met with, first met with Syracuse in 2013, facilitated the code recalibration process, which, and they passed the new code in 2014. We have the data that we shared with you for the first, really, four years after the code was first implemented. There's a, because of the pandemic, we're missing data for the last, for this year and last year. And, and that's just generally true for us. The, because of the partial nature of the years, the fact that in most places there, there was limited in-school education taking place. You know, we'll be resuming collection and analysis of data next, next year when we're expecting to have a full, a full year of in-school education.
Thank you. I think Board Member Maunstinger has a question.
Yes. One of the things that concerns me the most is that the things you're talking about in the language that's being presented, I have heard, as long as I've served on the school board for 14 years, we've spent a lot of money training people in MTSS training. We have repeatedly had staff development. My biggest concern is that I believe we have people in our district who are in the buildings, who are doing the work, who have so much to offer, and that they, that anything that comes from the outside is not organic to our district. And my experience as a board member is that so many of our staff are so frustrated because they see the issues. They're trying to address the issues. We are growing some restorative practices, and I think, from their perspective, let's do those yesterday rather than revisit data that they've been looking at for years. So, could you please address those concerns?
Michelle, do you want to?
I'm gonna ask Carol to take that.
So, I, I think one of, one of the things we try very hard to do as a third party is to really, our first and most important task is to work with partners, listen, you know, and look at, and look at how we help navigate all of the constituencies to really support a common vision. The other thing I'd like to share around professional learning and getting all voices and drafting, for example, standardized practices and intervention, is that's work that people in the district do. We don't make those choices. You know, what we're doing is collecting and presenting that data to them so that they can look at their data, look at their experience, and then come to some conclusions and consensus around how to standardize those good practices that they want to make sure are offered to every student in the district. The other piece is around turnkey training. What we have found in our experience, and I have to say it's been fairly gratifying, you know, is that people identify key leaders, teacher leaders, student support leaders, administrative leaders, who become part of school implementation teams. And they turnkey the training in, you know, in order to support an orientation for everyone and to really ensure that everyone can implement new practices. So, it's, it's very much a partnership with people in the district driving the content, if you will.
So, so I'm a little confused. You're saying that a big part of your role is data collection and analysis, is that correct?
So, I think in our partnership with Engage in School, because we define the partnership with them. They don't define the partnership for us. We're gonna use them as a process to collect information, collect data, involve our stakeholders, so that when we do create a code of conduct, it's really a code of conduct that's reflective of the community and the input from the community. And so, we will, we will use their expertise in collecting that information, and then we, as a district, would decide what that looks like and sound like and feel like for Winston. And the input from the school level will be from principals, teachers, social workers. Everybody that we can possibly engage in this process will be engaged in it to develop a code of conduct that's gonna help us reduce disparities in our discipline.
So, the place where, please forgive me.
That's okay, you get it.
Because I really am confused. I'm sitting here and I'm thinking that I've been seeing this data for years. And so, I'm very confused that repeatedly, you know, collecting the data, we have the data. We have the data. We've had the data for 14 years, and certainly before I ever got on the board, we have the data. We've had single-school culture. We've had multiple-tiered systems of support. We have hired outside vendor to train people in huge numbers repeatedly. My biggest concern, and it's profound, is that I know people inside of our district who are good, kind, thoughtful people. I know, I'm sitting here, there are teachers who, I can't think of a teacher here who wouldn't love to have a classroom with a safe person that they could send a child to, where they could take a timeout and quiet. I don't know that we have those rooms or those teachers. That's my concern. We have people in our community who have been desperate to get our district involved in restorative justice practices. We have a graduate program at UNCG in conflict resolution. We have teachers who have been trained in peer mediation as- We have teachers who have been trained in peer mediation as long as I've been on the board. So the pieces that people come and say they want to bring, those pieces have been here all along. And my concern is that I have sat here through vendors who came in where we spent so much money and so much time. But the heart of changing the culture, which I believe belongs to the people inside of our district, and we have to do that work. I don't want to wait two years to look at restorative justice practices. I want them there yesterday. And we have people who can help us do that right here, right now. We have people who are peer mediators, who could train peer mediation. My concern is we have so much of this knowledge already. We have so much of this data because I've seen it year after year after year. What we haven't had somehow is having the will as a district to take this on.
And we agree with you. I mean, I'm not going to disagree with you. This is a problem that's been around for many school districts. I think the biggest difference in this, in this time, in this place is that we're trying to do it very strategically and have a strategic.
Ms. Dr. Pratt, I am so sorry. I don't want to disrespect you, but I have never seen anybody not want to do it well strategically. And the reason I'm so upset is that I have heard the exact same language, exact same wording. I've seen the exact same presentations over and over again. And that's the part that concerns me is I believe profoundly that we have so much of the expertise right here, right now, inside of our district. If we would just access it and give it some life.
I just, I think, Board Member Montzinger, we, I know you're passionate, so passionate about this. And I appreciate all that you have said and brought out. And in my time on this board, I know, we hear this is the latest thing and we're going to get results. I do believe that we have so many new players within our district now. And, you know, we have definitely some groundwork that we didn't have before, and that's in a strategic plan. And I think that's also trying to gain that feedback. And we have Dr. McMillan and Dr. Pratt, who we didn't have before. And I, there's nothing within me that would think that these two folks who are so committed and dedicated to this work would bring something to us that they didn't feel would benefit them as they're, as they are doing the work internal. And so I would just, so that I can understand from this, you know, I know you're passionate about this work. And I know that you, you're looking for resources that are going to help you grow, from what I'm hearing, grow within our district what we need. Because as Ms. Montzinger said, we have great capable people. But I also know that we have people who have so many duties that they're already doing. And so can you help me understand, outside of the data collection point, which Ms. Montzinger's right, we have lots of, lots of data. For you, trying to move this work and lead this work from the district down, you know, from the building, what's the one thing that you can help me understand why we really need this?
So this is a huge rock for the district. It's a big issue that we must tackle. And I won't even go to the slide that I put together, but Nathan did bring the evidence, the data. That has been persistent in this district, just like in many other places, for a very, very long time. And all of the things that have been thrown out of ways to move this work are great things to do. But if we keep throwing, this is part of the work that senior team is doing right now, technical solutions at adaptive challenges, areas where we've got to, this is a hard challenge. This is not something where we just say, we're going to do. And I believe in restorative practices, and I'm a restorative practices trainer. But if we just say, we're going to implement that across all schools without really addressing the policies that we have in place, that we have looked at, some dated to 2010, 2009, that has not been reviewed, updated, looked at through a racial equity lens, because this is a racial equity issue that we see right here. If we don't make those changes because policies inform our practices, if we don't have buy-in, not only from the district and the community, if we don't have common language, if we don't have standardized practices, we're going to continue to be in the same cycle over and over and over again, which is where we are right now, right? And so, you know, what Engage in Schools can do for us is help us with that heavy lift, to engage all of our stakeholders, give us a real process that has been tried and true in other places, where we can get these voices together. All of these people that are saying, this is what you need to do, so we can really get them together and have meaningful, productive conversations that gets us to developing a code that can really help us shift course from where we are right now. If we don't do something different, drastic, that is comprehensive, that is system level, we're going to continue this path. If we just keep throwing different things and we try different things, we've got to have some structures, some standardization, some revisions in our policies and our practices so that we can all get on a page where, if, like the example that they gave, four different APs and four different responses. Just think about what that can do to a kid based on who they encounter. Now think about if they go from one school to another school, of how that can be a similar challenge. And so that's why the work, whether we go with Engage in Schools or not, we're going to continue the work. However, what I would like the board to think about is how heavy of a lift this is, the time and commitment that it's going to take. And without guidance on how to navigate this in a way that can really support us as district leaders who want to do this work and to bring everybody together to do this work, it could really slow our progress down. And we're at a point where we need to accelerate it. So that's kind of where I am, what I'm thinking at this point in time. And I don't know if Dr. Pratt wants to add anything.
I think Board Member Crowley had a question, and then Board Member Bohannon, and then Board Member Parker.
Yeah, so doing the school visits, since I've been on the board, so two and a half years worth of going into schools, there have been several examples that I've seen that, I mean, some schools actually highlighted what they were doing. Do we not have any schools doing this well now that we can replicate it throughout our system?
Yeah, yes, we do. And that was mentioned in the last board report that you guys received from Nathan. And I think one of the schools that he mentioned was North High School. And so they have seen a decrease in their suspensions in a two-year span. And he said at that meeting that we would tap into their expertise and what they've done over the last two years are part of this process. So this is a kind of a listening, learning kind of tool that we're going to do around school suspension and how we can help all schools in our district to address this problem. So that when you go to one school and another school, we're all on the same page about outcomes and what the consequences are for our Black and Brown students in the district.
Board Member Bohannon.
Thank you. So the first thing I'll say is that I don't need, although it's good to have the data in front of me, I don't really need to see the data because I lived it, right? I'm a graduate of this school district. I graduated from Parkland in 2012. I've seen firsthand and experienced firsthand the disproportionate applications of discipline, right? When one administrator, you know, decides to give a student ISS and another one decides to suspend a student for a couple of days, that happens. It still happens. As I'm visiting schools, I'm hearing about it all the time, right? I understand by way of experience and also subject matter expertise that racial equity is not something that typically, if you have everybody in a district and they have a job, everybody has a job to do, you can't then add that work on top of what they do already and expect to get any kind of systemic wide, like, like results. It just, it doesn't work, right? And in a public education schools, in a public education system where we already understand public education across the nation is under-resourced, to me, it makes, to me, it just makes sense that you would, you would, for a task this daunting, that you would need some additional assistance. But I think a question I will have, so I'll, that's what I'll say. And also just on a personal note, I think, because I've experienced this, like now, on this board, I've experienced it in other boards I've sat, I've sat on. I've experienced it when I was in college. I've experienced it when I was in high school. It seems to me that a lot of times when we have conversations about the importance of this work, there's a particular critique that kind of happens around how it's, whether or not it's needed as opposed to some of the other things that are kind of more familiar to us. And I can understand that. But I would say that it's a little bit more, it affects me a little bit more because it's tied to my lived experience. It's almost sometimes as if, you know, and even though it's not intentioned, it's unintentional, it sometimes feels as like, you know, if you have these issues, that it's sort of a questioning of, of kind of your own kind of lived experience, which I know it's not, but I know that this is needed. And so it kind of feels, and I think Ms. May sent us an email a couple of weeks ago, and she talked about how the difference between what you all are requesting now and sort of what has been done in the past is that we tend to adopt some things and if we don't kind of follow through with them, we, you know, we pay for them. And then when that contract's over, you know, or whatever. I think this is a little different. But I'm supposed to be using this time for a question. And so if this has been answered, please let me know. But did you, while I had to step away, did you all talk? Because I know we had a question about whether or not Guilford County was still working with this firm or not. Is that, Madam Superintendent?
Yeah, so I spoke to Dr. Contreras in Guilford, and she was in Syracuse and said the work of this company is amazing. It made a huge impact. She's still working, is working with them now in Guilford. And so, and that was a conversation very recently. And so I, I respect her opinion when it comes to working with a consulting group that's made an impact. So yes, we got a good, a good reference from her.
And do you have data from her or?
No, I don't have da, I did not ask her to send me any data. She's actually, she said it's been in the last couple of years that she's been working again with them. And there are reasons for a little bit of a delay.
Okay, I mean, again, COVID makes everything impossible.
Yeah, I did, I, can I just, while I have the mic, and I know there's, I know Board Member Parker wanted to say something. But the biggest thing, and again, you know, we, with this data so glaring and has been for so long, we literally could, you know, there is a community, our community, I'm sure is not happy with this and, at all. And there are many community members that are actually, you know, that could be probably way more vocal about this data. We owe it to our community. We owe it to our Black and Brown students to, instead of doing things that we take to scale, that we don't take to scale, we have pockets of excellence in classrooms across this district, pockets of excellence. We have some schools that are pockets of excellence. We have some restorative practices that are happening in some places. There is no systemic implementation of any of that across the system. And that's what we want Engage in Schools to help us come and do. It is going to be a massive undertaking, but starting with that code, I mean, it does start with a standard across everyone and a clear expectation. And it's unfair to our students to have different expectations. And so if we thought we could just do this on our own, I'll tell you, it'll take even longer if we bring some experts in. And it's not just about the systems level. It starts at the systems level. And it has to start, this type of initiative, I will tell you, has to be systems, at the systems level. But the support that they will provide in schools, the knowledge is going to come from the educators in schools and from the people that do understand restorative practices. They're not coming in with a training program. You mentioned, when they mentioned they're doing morning meetings, they called it something else in one school. They're using a wellness room or whatever you want to call it in one school. So they'll share strategies. They'll listen to the teachers in the schools. But what's going to be different is how do they now create a structure for execution, for consistent implementation, is that's going to lead to results. And I know I'm not saying anything anybody doesn't know, but I've had a lot of people reach out to me that have said, we have done pockets of things, but none of it has been sustained. And it's been some good work, and so this is no criticism. The bigger criticism is that our data is sitting here looking like this. And we owe it to our kids and our community to change it. And so I think that's what, you know, is, angers me the most, is that we still have this data even though we have tried things along the last 10 years. It still exists, so we got to try something different. And I don't think we have addressed the code and the policies that can lead to the unequal treatment of our kids. Not at least in 10 years we haven't, I mean, from what I've, from what I've been told. I haven't been here. So again, it's, none of this is a criticism, but people are begging for us to do something different and to actually do something consistent that will get results. We have great people in our district to do this, but we do need the help of somebody to come in and just help us get this across the entire system. And so I, I just wanted to say that, I'm sorry I took your time, Ms. Parker, but a minute of your time. You have all the time you want. I jumped in.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine. You kind of gave me a segue, so that's just fine. Who in, who at the school level have you reached out to about this plan? And, and folks, I got about four questions, so that would be the first one. Who, at what, who have you reached out to and what, and who are they? I mean, you don't have to name people, just like their position.
We reached out basically to all principals in the district on, in a meeting. We shared the same data that we shared with the board, and we shared it with principals. And I was just knocked off of my feet at the response. Principals said we had to do something. They were engaged in the conversation around moving forward. Let's get this data under control. Let's implement strategies that we need to be successful in, within our district. So our principals are on board with this. They're ready to move forward and begin the work and start developing a code that's going to meet the needs of our students.
And funding for this group, the amount and where it's coming from?
We're using at-risk dollars, out of state dollars, $0.69. And I think the budget is.
It was like $198,000, $198,000. So the amount that you saw at the last work session, which was, said not above $300,000, is less than that, so about $198,000.
And that is for what amount of time?
They will be working with us until we actually implement the code of August next year. That's our anticipated complete rollout.
So you think it'll take about a year for, and then?
In order for us to engage stakeholders, in order for us to do that deep dive into our policy work, recalibrate the code based on all the feedback and engagement from our stakeholders and actually have and do the orientation, which is that professional development piece, to get the whole district up to speed with what the new code is, the expectations, how we model behaviors, how we set our expectations to improve our culture and climate. That's going to take some time and then move into full implementation.
And once it's implemented, what will be our evaluation tool or accountability tool? How will we measure whether this is being successful, whether it's not? I mean, how do we plan to measure it?
So it will be aligned to our strategic plan. So monthly, we're planning to share data reports to principals, provide them feedback exactly where they're at, determine at that time, do we need to provide any additional support with the implementation of their strategies within their schools. We're also looking at research-based, school-wide discipline models that we need to implement within the building as well. And so there will be check-in points at schools to determine how effectively they are implementing these strategies. So everything that we do with this process will be monitored and shared out with principals and stakeholders.
And that's our hope.
Absolutely.
And also, so. And and also, um, so this this sustainability of this, um, I understand that, you know, that that there'll be, you know, it'll kind of be full force to implement it system-wide. But how and who do you plan to, if this is, and and I think some to Ms. Mott Singer's point, that that has been the issue in the past.
Mm-hmm.
That things have gone great when during the implementation and that it has it has worked. And I, you know, I've been in schools, volunteered in schools where I've seen that work. I've seen that happen classroom after classroom after classroom. However, obviously, somewhere along the way, something has happened that it has not been sustainable, it hasn't been carried through, it hasn't been, um, a priority or whatever the problem was. How do we plan past an implementation year, past a year or two, to make sure that we we do this work and that we make it a priority? So what what's the plan for that?
So I think it's a similar process of accountability with this teacher plan over five years that we have this goal. Um, so we know over the next five years we'll be monitoring this. Um, we're hoping that this practice then will be be embedded within the schools. Um, myself as deputy superintendent, um, the student service office, Effie's office, uh, we're committed to this work and to lead this work within the district and support our schools with implementing, um, implementing, um, best practices around discipline in in their schools. So we will, we will monitor this and make it a part of our daily work as an organization to support schools to to get the outcomes that we need.
And past, past the this group coming in and doing that, do you feel comfortable that we as a system can do that on our own? Or is it going to need, are we going to need more assistance from an outside group?
No, I think we're comfortable as far as the monitoring of, um, the code, um, once it's created. Um, that has to be a live and breathing document within this district and we have to have conversations with that regarding the code and the outcomes the code is providing us, um, on a regular. Um, so I think, um, having us as leaders in the in the district and having that constant communication with principals that this is not going away, that we're here, we're we're supporting this initiative and and we're expecting outcomes. Um, and we got to hold people accountable for those outcomes while providing them the necessary supports.
And I would say, Board Member Parker, that through this process, it will help us to really be proactive in developing an infrastructure that can sustain because it's going to take our area superintendents, you know, everybody that Dr. Pratt also said, to be a part of that work as we support, uh, people at the school level with the implementation. Because that's the role that we have to play as a district. Not only can we have to put this together, we have to, uh, own it. And by us having the help to create it, we can own it and be able to hold people accountable through the infrastructure that is developed, um, to have it system-wide.
And that that would be, I think, the infrastructure and the, I would assume that you guys, whomever, that you decide through this plan would be doing discipline walkthroughs with schools and seeing exactly like we do walkthroughs to evaluate, um, staff and principals and all that. So I just, um, it, you know, I I I share some of Ms. Mott Singer's frustration that we have 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 done a lot of this and I just think we need to really, I hope, or I I think we as a board need to be really accountable when this comes to us. That is sustainable, that it is long-term and that and that we monitor and we can see some results. And if we don't, we got to do something differently. So I just, um, you know, I I hope that this is a magic bullet that will
Oh. Board Member Parker, I was just, Board Member Parker, I, you, listen, and I know Board Member Bohannon wants to, um, say a few things and I'm going to be very brief, but you, you know, gave me an entrance right into that silver bullet. I've been in education for over 20 years and I would not pretend to look at other educators in this room and say this is the silver bullet. We all know what time it is. If you be in the profession long enough, you just see, you see it. And and we are mature and and we are professional, so we know things will come from top down to us. I think at the core of what we're about as professional educators, that when it comes, show us the respect to get input from us about how to make it work where we work. And when you can do that, even if I'm a teacher that's, if I've been in the game 10 years, I've said, well, I've I've seen this before. But even when you're faced with that level of professionalism and someone who's invested, if you come in the building and show people respect and work with people, then at the core of what we're trying to do, we'll take a step forward. I I don't think that this Engage Group or Effie McMillan, I know she's been doing this as long as I have, um, Dr. Pratt, longer than I have. We all know that at the end of the day, there is no program initiative project without where the road meets the rubber and that's professional people on the ground doing this work. If you would like for us to try something different, okay, come in, but come in and be willing to kind of show us what you're talking about and see where we're coming from. And let's work together, you know, uh, in in trying to get to where we are trying to get to. So I I just want this community to know that I don't think anybody on the board believes this is a silver bullet. We all have to work collaboratively as a district to change the trajectory that I think now we are in a different mind space than 10 years ago because we didn't even have the word equity 10 years ago. We were talking about zero tolerance. So obviously now I think we may be at a point where we can start doing things with the mindset around making these numbers, you know, trend downward and make sure all students have, you know, access to a great education. But I I share Board Members, um, Mott Singer's frustration because as a public school educator, I have almost lost my job around, I'm not going to do one more thing that doesn't work. But what I don't want this staff to, you know, feel the burden of is that our frustration is a lack of respect of what you do and the level of courage you have to get up and talk to us about what you're proposing. And you know that this is a very engaged board, so you know the questions are coming at you. I just want you to know that you're supported, we respect you. But just like, you know, Ms. Wright said, that our trainer, we're passionate about this work. So please know that it's just out of the love we have for our children that we query and we kind of get frustrated. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And just to mention is that a part of this process, we are going to be asking Board Members to participate in this process as well. So you'll be a part of this discussion and very much involved in this process as we create the new code.
Board Member Bohannon?
So I just had one one more quick question around accountability because I think one of the pieces that for me, I hope is different is that we're doing this, but then there, as we're thinking about this school, the evaluation instruments and how leaders in buildings are evaluated, that this is a part of that. Because I think that what tends to happen is you come in with this initiative and even if we are trying our best to embed it into the very marrow of the district, right? Until it's tied to how people are evaluated, it it honestly sometimes is something that can be either explicitly or implicitly be kind of put to the side. And I think if we are going to make the kind of investment into something like this, then we have to be assured that faculty will not just, well, faculty, but everybody from the ground up are going to be held accountable, including us.
Can can I comment on that? Because that is a good point, Mr. Board Member O'Hannon. So we had a group of principals, um, work together recently to create equity-centered actions, equity actions, um, that would align to our current principal evaluation. But they would be expectations of our leaders that really focus on equity. And so they came up with them, they shared them across all APs and principals in a survey for feedback. Like, these are the things that we're saying, they came up with them, that we as leaders should be demonstrating. And this work and the way we handle discipline and other disproportionate, uh, pieces of data and is part of it. And they came up with it. So what I will tell you is, at the same time that this is happening, this whole idea of an equity-centered principal pipeline will be happening at the same time to ensure that leaders are demonstrating equity, um, equity actions in their daily work. And they will be assessed on that moving forward. So it all goes hand in hand.
And restorative practice does go hand in hand with the work that Engage does, correct?
Absolutely.
Yes, yes.
It's embedded in the work that we have a restorative approach. Um, and so it goes hand in hand.
Thank you. I think Board Member Calvert-Hayes, you had a question.
Uh, I I understand what Elizabeth's talking about because I know we have tried several programs and we just felt like that was going to be the magic thing. And then, you know, now we're looking at something else. I don't know a whole lot about this, this company that's doing this now, but but folks, we're up here for these kids. That's what everybody is sitting here on this board, is to make sure that these kids are okay and that we can do whatever we can do. And I can't think of a better way to spend money than to make sure our kids are safe, to make sure that we can go to sleep at night and to know that when they're in the school building, we've got a program that's working and working well for our kids. So I can't imagine us stopping and saying, oh, let's wait or let's, you know, put this off or let's have our teachers or let's have our coaches. We've already tried all that and it didn't work. It's time now that I think we got to put our foot forward as a board. And I think there's not a board member here that wouldn't want to get involved, that wouldn't want to go and help any child. Because like I said, that's why we're sitting up here tonight and that's why we ran for office. So I just hope and pray that we get something going and we get something going before it's too late.
Chair Woodbury, I would, I would just like to add on to what Mr. Bohannon said, that when we look at school-wide data and we look at how they're doing, that we should be measuring them on equity and on climate because one of the things, people keep saying it matters, but when it comes down to it, what we look at, what we measure is what we say matters. And if we are serious about climate in the building, equity issues, who's a limit, whose discipline is changing because the schools are warm, welcoming, kind place where children are excited to be? If we're not measuring that and congratulating that and talking about that, every time data comes up, people will know that that's secondary. And it's critical that we change how we look at data in this district and talk about our schools all the time, not just when we're talking about equity, every time we talk about the buildings.
Thank you.
I think that, um, we, I think that we have probably exhausted maybe all of that.
Well, we would just like to say thank you because we share the same passion and we, uh, would not have taken on such bold goals in our strategic plan if we didn't see, first of all, the need and if we didn't have the will to change outcomes in a meaningful way for our students so that they can live out their life's dreams. And so, um, we appreciate the passion that comes from the board and the questions that we share and that passion in really changing these outcomes.
Thank you. And again, thank you to the Engage Group for coming on and sharing information and allowing us to ask questions, um, directly to them. The last discussion item is the State of the District by Tricia McManus, Superintendent. I hope everyone gets the State of the District pamphlet tonight. I hope maybe
That's not it. This is, it might be a PDF on file. So every
You all have one of these.
We can pa- we can pass these out. Yeah, you want to pass them out to people at least in the audience? So and then on there, it's on Symbly for the public to see as well. So I will, let me just let you know what this is. So first of all, in September, we're going to do an annual report. And in that report, it's going to go deeper into student data because we'll have all of our data for the whole school year. And although we might not have some state assessments, um, we will definitely have iReady, um, we'll have other data that we can share in an end-of-the-year report. And that'll, Board Members, that'll be in September and that'll be very comprehensive. This is really, honestly, it almost should be called Points of Pride. You're not going to hear a State of the District like a State of the Union where I talk about everything. I mean, I could be up here for hours. This is really a point of of pride right now for the last year. So this is not just this school year. This was when the pandemic started last March. So from March, I wasn't even here, so I I cannot take credit for all the stuff in here, but even up until more recently. And so I just wanted to share some highlights. If you open the brochure, on the left-hand column, it's just a little bit about, um, the demographics of the district. What what is our, the makeup of our student population? And what is our mission, vision, and our governance structure? So it's just a a high-level, um, information about the district. If you look to the right, and we we talk about our strategic plan goals in all of our board items, those are the five goals that are driving the work when people come up with contracts and and those are the five goals that we live and breathe every day. So that's, we wanted everyone to know what those were. As you open, the left-hand side column is really everything COVID in one place. And this is a a kind of a year at a glance. And I just, it it, when you start to look at this in one place, um, it's pretty impressive what the stakeholders in this district were able to accomplish. And that is from, you know, our our teachers, our custodians, our our cafeteria workers, our district staff, our board, because you were the whole time guiding the work, all of our employee groups. And so if you look at left, the left-hand column, it's things we're able to accomplish, starting with the cares team, how many referrals and how many home visits that they did during the year this year um, to make sure that kids had what they needed. The technology, how many Chromebooks were distributed, how many internet hotspots distributed and how many Wi-Fi buses were deployed. So when you look at 30,500 Chromebooks books distributed and over 6,000 hotspots. Um, and this is a result of so many people working together. When you go to communication with families, I talked a little bit about this time. It's been, there's been so much on our, um, so much communication with families. Um, the remote learning centers, you saw the video tonight, and that was such a a great video, um, that showed a remote learning center in action or a couple of them. But we had 44 centers up and running in the fall that continued, um, when our schools were not yet open. 44 centers opened so that kids that needed some in-person support were get, could get it. And you can see, um, thousand-plus students were served in those remote learning centers during peak months and before we started coming back to school. You can look at the supplies that were delivered to schools. Very impressive were masks that were donated by different groups, both Community for Safe Schools and Hanes. I mean, just lots of community support this year. You can look at student nutrition and how many millions of breakfasts and lunches were served and and distributed into the community for families so that they could still eat, even when they were home during the pandemic. And then you can look a lot about the staff development. Um, our teachers did so much training this year. When you think about what they, how they had to start the year, get into, go into a school year, learn so many new things from from new curriculum that that they were using to, um, um, God, why am I blank on the name? Canvas. Oh, my goodness. I could not, can you believe I could not remember the name Canvas? Canvas, um, to learn all of that and and to think about, and I would have been one of these teachers, some of the teachers that had to go from, you know, not being the most technically literate to being technical experts now when it comes to using, you know, online learning and Zoom and meetings. Like, it's pretty amazing. If you look on the inside then, you can see some of the actions that have been taken. These are district actions this year. So the the and and all of these things were started but have to be continued and prioritized. So the the infused So the infused curriculum was something that was started and, and that continues and just has to continue to be strengthened and focused on. The Office of Equity and the Executive Director, Effie was up here. All of that was started this year. The Community Engagement Office and a Community Engagement Executive Director, that's all new this year because we need to do a better job with community outreach. And that's what that role in that office has been created for. The Choice Neighborhood Grant, which in May, we will be bringing them, we will be having an update at the May Board Meeting for the Choice Neighborhood Grant and where we're at with that. That's something that we, that we received. You can see the teacher supplement that was, that was approved. The lead together, the work with, with our SROs, that started this year, even during the pandemic. Everything had to kind of move into kind of a remote rollout, but that started. You can see the canvas, you can see the cameras in the classrooms. You can see there's all the curriculum, Wonders and Envision Math. And I cannot even see some of these things, I need glasses. But the, the literature, the literature one for middle and high schools. Like, all of these were new programs that were implemented this school year. And then the Project Impact and the K3 Textbooks. So all of those were things that were happening even with the challenges of the pandemic. And then you can see on the right, some recognitions and achievements for some of our schools and some of our individual teachers and staff. And so, and these are just some. I mean, we could go on and on. You know, we didn't even mention all of our students tonight that got a war. I mean, the, the list goes on and on. But this was just, and then the back, the back cover is just how many employees we have, what was our budget? And then what are the bond projects? Where are we with our bond projects? And so we wanted to provide that to our community. Where are we with those as well? So again, it's a very quick update. And in September, we will be doing a full annual report. And that will show student data for this school year, attendance, achievement, culture and climate data, our suspension data, all, all of the data. And it'll be a very comprehensive report in September. But we just wanted to get something now because we hadn't done one of these, I don't think, in about a year. So we thought, let's do one now to show some of our points of pride and to thank all of our educators in our system for, for the amazing work this year. So any questions? And thanks to Brent and your team for designing a nice brochure for us. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda, action items, I, I know that we're at nine o'clock. You know, my preference is to try to muscle through these action items and maybe we'll get out by nine thirty.
I think, I think we have Brunson, Chair Woodbury.
Oh, the discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry about that. Ma'am, okay. So the neck, the last item on our discussion item is the Brunson Survey Results and Proposed Next Steps. Sorry about that. Maybe we will take a break after this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Colin Moore's topic, but I'm here to support him with the Brunson Survey Results. So I want to share those with you now. You may remember that you asked last time that we did a survey that went only to the parents, students and staff at Brunson, as well as some other students that are zoned for Brunson and students that are Southwest in the HAG program. So this is the answer to the first question, who took the survey? You see that we got 250 student voices. That's a good thing. We always want to have student voices responding in our surveys. We're glad to see that students did respond. 166 parents responded, 39 teachers. By the way, although that looks like a low number of teachers, that was actually a very high response rate because we were just looking at the Brunson teachers. So we, we got almost all of the teachers' voices that we were going after. And so when we asked the question, if Brunson is built at the Patterson Avenue site, would you choose to work there or attend there or send your student there? And overwhelmingly, you see the answer is yes. About 50% of the respondents said yes, they would choose to attend, work, or send their, send their child there. You'll note that 20% said no, a little over 20%, about 30% said they didn't know. So then we look at how that question was answered by subgroup. So you'll note that we got slightly different answers when you disaggregate it by what the students said, what the teachers said, and what the parents said. You'll note that the teacher and student responses are very similar. Students and teachers both said yes, they would absolutely choose to work or attend a school at the Brunson site. Their second-largest response was, I don't know. Parents were slightly different. Parents' number-one response was no, but their second-largest response was, I don't know. So then obviously, you want to ask the next question. If they said no, why did they say no? So we then asked that question. If you would not choose to work, attend, or send your student to the Patterson Avenue location, why? We gave them three options and then we gave an open-ended option for them to fill us in with more information. So the number-one reason that people, the people that said no, why they said no, was the location was too far from the current site. Well, excuse me, the number-one reason was that other. That was the number-one reason. I'm going to, I'm going to help to explain to you what they said with the other. But of the three options that we gave them, the number-one option that they selected was the location is too far from the current site. After that, it was environmental concerns and finally, traffic concerns. So we really want to dig into this, what was the other? What does that mean? And they got an opportunity to, to answer that. It was an open-ended question. And I'll tell you two ways that we looked at that data. The first way is through a process called text mining. So we looked at words that connected in their open-ended answers to this question. And you'll see that, that number-one reason was the HAG program. And another way to look at that is, they like the HAG program at Southwest. They wouldn't leave Southwest. Because remember, this survey went to Southwest HAG parents and students. The other thing is, they like their current school. Remember, we surveyed parents that are in the Brunson zone. So they may have chosen to go to another school. They may have chosen to go to Whittaker. They may have chosen to go to Cook. And so what they said to us there is, they like their current school. And regardless of where Brunson moves, they're going to stay at their current school. Some of them indicated that although they're in fifth grade now, they're not going to stay in elementary school. They're going to be going to middle school, so they felt like it didn't apply to them. And, and you know, that's true. You know, they're also, they love Southwest. And again, they indicated, we're moving on to middle school, so they felt like that's why the no. So in addition to text mining, there's another process that we can use. It's called a network analysis that folks in the data analyst field use. And really what this does, it'll allow you to visualize the answers that we got, how strong they were and such. And so let me, let me just show you what that looks like here. So if we put this into a kind of a visual diagram of the responses that we got, you'll see, and I'll start kind of there from the bottom left. They love the HAG program. They like it at Southwest. They also love being at Whittaker. They wouldn't want to leave Southwest. They like Southwest. And they like their current school. Some of them indicated they're going to a middle school. Some indicated that they're at Cook Elementary and that's where they would intend to stay. So if you think of, you know, where do we see no in relation to the Patterson Avenue site? We only see a couple of answers. In the bottom right there, you see a small number of answers that tied together. It isn't a safe area. In the top right, you see mention of a homeless shelter. And we can assume it's the proximity to the new Patterson Avenue site. In the top left, you see mention of a, quote, sketchy neighborhood. We're quoting the responses that we got here. You know, overall, the majority of respondents said, yes, they would go to the Patterson Avenue site. The majority of, that is both students and staff. And then some parents didn't, but you see the reason why some parents said that they would not choose to send their students to that new Patterson Avenue site. Colin has a lot more information for you about the site itself. But do you all have any questions about the survey that was conducted?
About the survey, I don't conclude that a majority want to go there if you, if we didn't cross 50%. The majority won't go or don't know.
I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that. Sure, when I say majority, that is the majority of respondents, the majority of respondents. So, yeah, that's how I would characterize that.
I would just like to make a comment about when we moved to Career Center. And again, this is often what gets framed in language is racism and classism. And it's just turns into vague language like sketchy neighborhood. When we were, and Marilyn was on that committee with me when we were looking at where to re-put the Career Center, there was also a great deal of the same language about parents. And many parents who said, I won't send my children to Career Center if you put it there. And obviously, they did send their children to Career Center. But that, that's exactly the same words that came up and the same perspective about why we couldn't build Career Center where we built it. And I have to say that I think Career Center is one of the most successfully placed schools in our district.
Okay, thank you.
I know it's not my job to do shout-outs, but I've got to give Andy and his staff an amazing shout-out for the survey, the way they pulled this thing together. They really did an amazing job of analyzing the data and providing us, my department, with some information that we could use to bring to you. So what we want to talk about next, excuse me, is our next steps for consideration of the Patterson Avenue property. Just kind of talked about a few things there. So what, what we would like to do is, looking at the option, extend the option to purchase of the land of the Patterson Avenue site. As you may know, we have an option on the land now. That option expires on June 14th. So what we would like to do is look at extending the option, or the option to purchase until 11/15. So we've approached the sellers about that and they're willing to do that for, for a price of $15,000, which I think by comparison is relatively small. That price would be non-refundable if we don't move forward. However, if we do move forward, it would come off the purchase price. So that would be, that would be given back to us or taken into account of closing. And I just, the payments applied at closing, I got these bullets. We would fund this $15,000 from the Brunson Bond Project. So this is not something that we're going to have to find $15,000 to spend. We would fund it from the Brunson Bond Project, of which we've already requested some money from the County Commissioners for that. The other thing that we would look to do is making applications to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Equality to do the, to do, to enter into the Brownfields program. We've talked about that a little bit. So what we would do there is ask for an expedited review by NCDEQ that will result in an agreement in about eight to 12 months in lieu of typical 15 to 24 months as you get into their program. The draft of the agreement would be available in six to seven months. And the rest of that process looks like the, the draft of the agreement is developed, they send it out for public review and public comment and public meetings for about 30 days. They bring the information back and they've got about another month or two of pulling information together, getting, getting the document finalized and signed by all the attorneys. And then they actually register the document with the Register of Deeds. So it becomes a binding part of the, of the deed for the property. So it would stay with the property as well. There is a cost that goes with the expedited review. There's a $30,000 price tag that goes with that to take it from, you know, a six-to-eight-month wait up to the front of the line. The seller on the property has previously reduced the purchase price to offset the cost of the expedited review. If you may remember, about a year ago, we started having that conversation and they dropped the price of the, of the land, $30,000 to cover that. So, and once again, you know, we'll, we'll be funding that preliminary, or we'll be funding that from the Brunson, Brunson Bond Project budget. So the other thing we would like to do in this extended option time is to perform community meetings. Reached out to several school districts in our, kind of our due diligence period in the last few months, talked to a lot in the Northeast, New York City schools, Wound Socket, Rhode Island schools, New Jersey School Development Authority. And our contractor, Gil Bain, has an office in Providence, Rhode Island. And they've done a significant number of, of schools along the same line that would have the same type of program. The overwhelming, repeated thing they keep saying is, have the community meetings. Get, and forget, be transparent with your community. Have the community meetings. Make sure they understand everything that's going on. So that's something we would do during this, during this remainder, this extended option time. And we would do at those to be both virtually and in person. The plan would be to do one meeting each, but we could certainly do more just depending on what kind of turnout we get and how that kind of, how it works out. But during those, we'll solicit during, as part, I mentioned a little bit earlier, as part of, a part of the program, they're going to solicit community input for 30 days and conduct those public meetings. So the recommendation that staff would like to make is that the option, that we extend the option to purchase until 11/15/21 and that we make the application for the expedited review with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. Funding, as I mentioned in earlier, funding for both of those items would be from the Brunson Project Budget. So total is to be about $45,000 of an expenditure that would kind of, I think, possibly get us to the point of, if you, if we're kind of on the fence on what this program looks like, that it would kind of make us feel a little bit better. So with that, I'll address any questions.
So I have a couple. The first is, what is the total budget for the Brunson project?
Mr. Bahannon, it's about, it's about $27, $28 million. I'm going from memory, but the total budget, total project budget's about $27, $28 million.
So all of the options are more than that, right? Okay. So then where is the rest of it coming from? So I know where it's coming from, but does that, so what are we taking away? Like, where are we pulling it from?
Well, so most of our projects that have been a part of the 2016 bond, due to the construction inflated costs, have, have been over those, those budgets. We would just need to work hard. As of the Construction Department, what we got, what we have in front of us is a, a, we're kind of banking on that the construction prices are coming back down. During any, during most of the bonds in the last 25 years, they've been very cyclical. They may start out high at the beginning of the bond, but the, the construction costs will go down toward the end of the bond. We're seeing some of those prices, even though you are seeing some of those costs. We saw some of that at Wiley, if you remember. We were significantly, came in significantly lower than what we had thought the estimate would be. Not less than our budget, but less than what we were fearing it might be. There are some construction materials prices that are going up a little bit more, but we anticipate by the time this project goes to construction, those will level off. And my staff's just got to work hard in, in making numbers work, not just numbers, but square footages, doing some collaborative spaces that may can be used for more than one purpose.
And so, did I hear you say we already had a contractor?
We selected a, a construction manager at risk. So this project was, this is the last construction manager at risk project that we had in that bank of five. And we elected, we went with Gil Bain Construction out of Durham.
Okay. So the school isn't designed, is, is it, it's not designed?
There, we have done programming and schematic design. That's not going to be, it's going to be dependent on, it's not going to be dependent on where the site is. We have had preliminary meetings with Brunson staff about two and a half years ago in which we did some programming.
Okay. And then my last question is, you said that the typical, the application period for the Brownfields with the expedited review is eight to 12 months as opposed to?
15 to 24.
And that is prior to, so then after we get the application approved, is that when we do the? Because I know you said at one time, you do like some design and you build, like?
So yeah, so that, that community, once you make the application with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, they'll be interacting with us, with our architects, and with our environmental testing firm and, and our attorneys to make sure we've got all the language in the agreement. So they'll, they'll work with the architects and say, okay, what are you going to put on this part of the site? They'll talk to the testing agency. What'd you find in this location on the site? There'll be a lot of interaction in those six months to get to that draft agreement and to put it on the street for the public to review.
Okay. And so what is the earliest, in your opinion, that people would be in the building? No matter where, I mean, I know it depends on how fast we move with the selection of the site, but just ballpark it.
How many times have I done that? I, I, I want to knock on wood, but if everything goes, you know, we, we, we need about eight or nine months of design. The, the Brownfield, the DEQ piece is going to add a couple of months. But my optimism is that we, that the students would be, if we can get, if we can get moving on this part of it, on performing some of this Brownfields program, that students could be in the building in October, I mean, I'm sorry, in August of 2024. Thank you.
I would, I just have, so I mean, I, I think that there have been questions that, I know board members have asked that haven't been fully answered. I, it seems, and help me understand this, but I, I think that the, the, the moving forward with the Brownfield application and, and, and bringing those folks on board and us having that when we go out to the community to, to have these meetings, that that's the kind of piece that we need. So then when people ask direct questions about what the mediation will look like, what, what exactly, that they, that they know because they have done the work on the site. Is that right?
That's absolutely right. That's exactly what happens in that six-month process. So it would, they would kind of develop what that remediation would look like. So when we come back and whenever that program's developed, we could say, all right, we're going to have to take out 20 feet deep of dirt or we're going to have to remove that five-gallon bucket worth of dirt. Or, or we're going to have to, that's what they come back and tell us. Because what this program does is removes the liability from us. We have no liability on contamination with the Brownfields program. That become, that's what they, they guarantee that there's nothing. And it's, I was, I was telling Mr. Kraft a little bit earlier, it's just an amazing process within this. They don't, they don't close the books on a project. They, they constantly monitor the project forever. I mean, we, we finish a project, I put it in a file, I send it over here to the, to the IRC. It doesn't happen with this. This thing is a constant process and they evaluate it every year.
And so the, the other part of that is that, that they, I'm assuming that when we go out to have the community meetings and part of the, I'm not sure, I don't know, answers, maybe it's just more education about what is a Brownfield and this is okay for my student to be there. And will, and they, I'm assuming they will assist with that, with those meetings.
So they, yeah, they perform their own meeting after they develop the draft and that will be a- that will be an NCDEQ-led meeting. We will, in the meantime, have some of those with some information sessions, and have already thought to bring DEQ, and they're willing to do it. They've, they've got a lady that's dedicated, does the Brownfields program in Winston-Salem. So there's, we're planning on having them at that meeting as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So Colin, is that a North Carolina company? Because that's the first I've heard of that, where they would guarantee, and you know, I like that.
So the North Carolina company for which, Ms. Calhoun, I'm sorry?
The ones that you're talking about that'll come in and take over on the Brownfield group?
So, so yes, that's the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. That's, that's who would always monitor it annually for, forever.
Well, that's great, because you know, I, I don't think, have we really discussed that in detail? I didn't think that, that we had, because that's good news to me.
Oh yeah. That's, and I learned, I learned more about it every time I talked to the DEQ people, and they, that was astounding to me that the books never close.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I think that, you know, based on some of the research I have done, where school districts that because of just not having space capacity with land had to go down this route, they learned a lot of things around what not to do and what to do to overcome the hurdle of Brownfield. And so I would ask, in addition to the North Carolina Environmental Quality Control, that we look at what are the nonprofit groups that come in and help school districts to connect with communities that act in a very non-biased way around, hey, I think you should or shouldn't, or if you do, make sure, you know, community people are fully aware of, you know, you could end up in a situation where 20, 30 years down the road, there are some possibilities where it's not safe, right? I just want to be very, very transparent with the community regardless of what I support or not. I just think we need to make sure that the community and the school is, is highly supported around making this decision with people, experts in the field. So thank you for the information.
I just, I just did want to make a comment, that the thing about a place that is already a designated Brownfield is that the, whatever dangers are already there, and you build to mitigate that, what has been a problem for people is things that happened years ago that were normal practices, created problems that nobody was expecting, and that there's been a process of discovering that. So for example, once upon a time, businesses just dissolved, took solvents and threw them into the ground, because they disappeared and they went away. Nobody was violating any laws that existed. There were no laws that existed, and what we've come to learn is that nothing goes away. There's no place called away. But when you have a Brownfield that's designated, the damage is already known. It's identified. There's, you know, there's not a secret, we didn't know that there was damage, you do know about it. My biggest concern about Brownfields and our willingness to build there is if we decide that someplace it is any kind of environmental damage, we will stop building schools in cities entirely, and we will only build suburban schools. And that, again, is a huge equity issue. If we want to have schools that are downtown, there's not going to be plots of land that have been sitting there. We're not going to find 12 acres of grassy field that nobody's ever done any kind of industry on downtown. So I think it's a very important philosophical understanding that if you want to have downtown city schools, we're going to have to reckon with this.
I think that that's a, that's a great point. I just want to, you know, make sure that we, with all due diligence, make sure that we go through a rigorous process to do all we can do to empower the community around whatever the concerns are. And I think, not to belabor the point, one of the issues our school district have is a lot of our inner-city schools are, you know, majority not, you know, the children are not in those schools. There's an underpopulation of a lot of our schools inside the city. So I think we need to also address those issues as we think about, ideally, you know, with population boom, we will have to think about, you know, getting land maybe on areas that, you know, not the most desirable, but I would ask that we also, as a school board, focus on how to make sure the schools that are underpopulated severely, that we take a look at, making sure that those are at par before we start building, you know, other schools too. But nevertheless, your, your point is well-taken, and I think we understand that, Foreman McCrowley.
Yeah, I just have one question for Mr. Kraft. Of the parent responses, do we know what the breakdown was between Southwest and Brunson?
We can get that for you. I know that 24% of the Brunson parents said no, but I, I understand your question. Is it a little deeper? And yeah, I, I would tell you, right, that there are far fewer Southwest parents in the overall sample, right, because there's just fewer kids. While we sampled all of the students at Brunson, we only sampled the HAG students at Southwest. So it's a far, far smaller number, but I recognize I'm not clearly answering your question. I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that there may be some concerns too, apparently, that some of the staff feel like there was a disconnect with communication to get there, to get as much input that is desirable. So we may want to talk with the principal to make sure all the staff had an opportunity, so. Colin, you, anybody, any more questions or comments to, to Colin? Mr. Moore? Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would like to take a five-minute recess, but because we do need to share some emergency news with the board around personnel, I need to ask for a motion for, to go out for a personnel issue for just a few minutes, and we'll take a break during this time too. So if I can get a motion to go?
Second.
Okay. If there are no question or discussion, all in favor? Okay. Any opposed? So we can meet in the back room very quickly for just one minute to get an update. Thank you, everyone, for the break. We are going to resume our meeting with the action items. The, I think board member Lot Singer is going to make a motion to approve some of the action items.
I, I am going to make a motion that we approve action item A through M, including the change on H about moving forward on Brunson. And if a board member wishes to take any one of these items out and vote separately, I'm, I'm just trying to move us along.
Motion to approve all.
Motion to approve them all with the change on H, as we discussed earlier.
Yes.
Second.
Are we allowed to do that?
Yes, I checked with Dion.
Okay.
Yes, I did. Check. So if anybody wanted to take one of the particular votes out and vote on it separately, we can certainly do that. But otherwise, to vote on all the action items.
Okay. Is there any, so there's a motion, and it has been properly second. Is there any question or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? All right. So the motion moves forward. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda items, motion to approve.
Move approval. Second.
Any further question or discussion? All in favor? Okay. Motion passes. The next item is the superintendent's update and board announcements.
Yes. I'm going to go very quickly through this, so I'm going to have Kevin be moving, and I'm going to stay here to do it. So Kevin, just, this is a quick update, both of COVID and some other things upcoming. But yes, we're back with four days a week. The uptick is a tiny bit more, but, a little bit more, but so is the, why do I, why am I doing this? Sorry. So is the, so is the county. On a call that I was on today, Joshua made that comment. It's not, it's not a drastic uptick, but it is. All right, next. You can see where Forsyth County is now with positivity rates, but again, he said it's actually tapered off in the last few days. Here are some updated symptoms, just so you know, that we have updated our items. These are all the symptoms now that folks have to be paying attention to. Everybody, pay attention. Fever, sore throat, difficulty breathing, cough, all of that. There are new items here, and we need everybody to pay attention to those. Next. Next. So this is about the, the 10 days, it's exclusion for 10 days, which we talked about last time. Next. Go ahead of the next. I'm just going quickly. This is what's really important. So May 3rd, we're going to stop that full-blown screening process, but we are doing a continuous educational campaign, and it's on the next slide. Every school has gotten many of these posters, and we are actually sending these home to families. What we want our families to do, and our, and everyone, not only family, teachers, everyone, everybody in our district that works in our district, needs to know the symptoms. We showed you them on the slide. Ask the questions to yourself every day, and please don't come to school sick. Do not come to work with any of those symptoms. That is how we're going to protect each other from any virus spread. So, and here's another version of it. And we also sent these out in Spanish and in English. And so this is our big campaign, and we are going to keep it going till the end of this school year and into the summer. Choice committees, there are forums being held soon. We wanted to make sure the public knows about these, and we will continue to post these. And next, Esther spending forums. We are going to get community input on our Esther dollars, as we've been talking about. So here are some. Noon, May 20th, and these will all be posted online. And then you can see the Minister's Conference is going to host a session. You can also see another Facebook Live and Cable 2. And then there are some other groups, there are many other groups that are going to be working together to host some sessions. You can see some of those at the bottom. SSAC, the TAC, Community Learning Center Task Force, the Equity Advisory Committee, and then there are other community groups that are joining together, Action for Equity and some others that are going to be hosting some. Graduation, right now, we are moving forward with our plans as they are. Please, if anyone has questions, check your school for details, and the basic schedule is on our website. Here's our summer programming. There are lots of adventures to choose from, so we hope that our families, everyone is registering for summer programs right now. Transportation, meals will, and meals will all be provided this summer. And I wanted to say, before I turn it back over to Chair Woodbury, next week is an important week for us with Teacher Appreciation Week. I know she's going to mention that, but in advance, happy Teacher Appreciation Week, and to all of our teachers and educators across the system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McManus. And also, May 6th is the Virtual Core Wars. I think Bren is working with board members to get some key information from us to make sure that we are supportive and a part of the Core Wars. Along with Teacher Appreciation Week, I would just like to thank Rebecca McKnight and her family at this time. We're going to have a moment of silence, but I want people to know that in education, we teach in this profession. in education, we teach in this profession and God knows, we go from one school to the next. But you grow to love and respect the people that you work with and their families. One of the first families that I worked with was the McKnight families in Guilford County School. And one of the most humbling acts I had to do last week was to talk to her husband, a dear friend of mine, around her illness. And as we were having this board meeting, he texts me and said, Shay, Rebecca's gone. So I wanted to let the board know. That's why we went and had a, you know, quick closed session. And it's public information, so I can share it because he wanted me to know before he shared it. But we're going to ask for a quick moment of silence for Rebecca McKnight and then I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you. For all of you who don't know, Rebecca McKnight is also a social studies teacher is her background. So I would ask for now a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
There are no question or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Have a good night.